Okay, it's kind of plateauing in a low number, so we'll just get going. I'd like to call the Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020 meeting that cohasse school committee to order on what is hopefully our last full remote Wednesday district-wide ever, hopefully, if everything goes as planned. Would all committee members that are present please indicate so in attendance? Mrs. Colery?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. Mar?
Present.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Present.
Present, Craig McClellan. As always, or as has been the recent practice, this otherwise in-person public meeting is being held virtually via Zoom. It's being streamed live via Facebook and Cohasset 143 TV. The first agenda item is public comment, so I'll give a second to see if anyone has any public comments. This is, this agenda item is reserved for, this part of the agenda is reserved for discussion points that aren't related to items that are already on the agenda. So if your question or comment relates to something that's already on the agenda, just reserve that until we reach that point in the agenda. Otherwise, you're welcome to raise your point now. I'll just give it a second, see if anyone chimes in with anything. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We, I am going to seek a motion to advance the executive session portion of tonight's meeting, but maybe, Dr. Sullivan, I'm thinking is maybe we move into a part of the superintendent's report and just hear from the student advisors first before we do that. It being a school night, and maybe we can hear from them, and then we can, maybe I'll seek that motion. Does that seem prudent to everyone? Okay, so Dr. Sullivan, could you please begin the superintendent's report by hearing from the student advisors?
I sure will, Chairman McClellan. Well, welcome back, everyone, from what I hope was a restful and a nice Thanksgiving break. Certainly, I had a nice break, and it was nice to be with my immediate family, which is, of course, kind of a big group, just under the governor's order, to be honest, with just the people who live in my house. But we had, it was a nice time, and I hope everyone had a wonderful time out there with their families. So yes, I'm very happy to have with us, in addition to Caroline Patterson, who you all know, and who has done such a great job for us over the last couple of years, two additional members of what is our school committee slash superintendent Student Advisory Council, which will meet now monthly, met this month, had, I thought, a very productive meeting. And they're just an amazing group. I'll just tell you who we have on that team before I introduce Jenna and Jake formally. But on that team right now, we have two ninth graders, Charlie Lankow and Noah McDowell. We have a 10th grader named Mercedes O'Neal. And then we do have Jake Squatrito and Jenna Giglio, who are our 11th graders. And then we have, of course, one senior, Caroline Patterson. We're looking to get a couple of additional middle school members, and then we always look to have some meaningful connection with our Deer Hill group, as well as we did last year. And I'll let them talk a little bit about what we kind of mentioned as a subject. Maybe Caroline can update a little bit about our advisory council, what we talked about. I know we really are interested in digging into what students are going through, and what the student's experience is right now, collecting their voice and trying to put into place procedures that will help them. So that's really our main goal for the immediate future, as well as being a great conduit to communicate with the school committee. So without further ado, we're going to start a cycle like we did last year, where we'll have Caroline and Jake and Jenna. And the beauty about having three of them is that, you know, if they have something on their calendars, they're busy people, that we can, you know, shift it around. And it's nice to get different perspectives, and just my hat's off to this team. First of all, they're the absolute epitome of what is great about Cohasset students. You know, they're outgoing, they're sincere, they're incredibly well-spoken, and very analytical, and I very much appreciate it. We've had really positive conversations, and there's a lot we can do with this team moving forward. So I told Jenna and Jake I wouldn't really put them on the spot today too much, except to introduce themselves. And maybe Jenna, you can start, and just tell a little bit about, you know, who you are, and sort of some of the things you're involved with in Cohasset. And of course, I mentioned Jenna as a junior. So Jenna, if you want to just unmute and introduce yourself.
So hi, I'm Jenna Giglio, and as Dr. Sullivan said, I'm a junior at Cohasset. And I've loved working with Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Skollins for the past year. I joined last year as a sophomore, and it's just been really great experience getting to know them and becoming more involved in my community. And I love doing groups like this, I'm involved with a couple other. And yeah, it's just been a great experience, and I'm super excited to get the opportunity to be on this board now and rotate through with Jake and Caroline. And I'm super excited, so thank you.
That's great, that's nice, thank you Jenna. And of course, I mentioned Jake Squatrito. Jake, if you want to just tell us a little bit about yourself and what kind of things you're involved with in Cohasset.
Yeah, so I also joined last year, just like Jenna. And normally, I would be involved in theater right now, but as I always say to everybody, that's like a big no-no right now, obviously. So, you know, not doing much right now. But, you know, I like being involved with this because I feel like it's a very good place to really be heard and really share your opinion. And I think what's interesting is that, you know, just kind of by coincidence, we all have a lot of different opinions and ideas to share. So I think we've been able to be like very productive, I would hope. And I just, I'm very happy to be a part of that because that's something that I really appreciate.
That's great, and Jake, thank you Jake. And Jenna and Jake, along with Caroline, will be great ambassadors for the class of students and just great representatives of them. So excited to have you here. And as always, I will turn it over to our senior member of this team here, Caroline, to give us just a bit of an update about what's happened in the last week or so.
Yes, thank you. So, and we talked last week prior to the official Thanksgiving break. We met, all of us, like across all grade levels, and it was really nice to see kind of everyone's faces again, even though it was on Zoom. And kind of discuss, everyone kind of caught up in how their summer went, and how things changed for them personally, kind of through the summer, like COVID-wise and everything. And now, looking forward, we're hopefully going to be able to start targeting and gathering as much information as we can about what students need help with the most, and how we can support them right now and be proactive about that as we can. And then, looking forward, I'm excited to have a couple members too, including me and Mercedes, on the strategic planning and looking forward into that. And I think that's going to be a really unique experience for me because I don't know much about it and what goes into it. And I'm excited to learn something new. And I think how, I'm also happy to get to share this experience with Jenna and Jake because as much as I think I've given, I've also gained like public speaking, especially now, public speaking over Zoom. I definitely feel more confident going about this, doing it regularly, and being punctual, and thinking about kind of like other people, other than yourself. It sounds a little cliche, but I've always been grateful for this opportunity. And I'm glad I got to share it with these other student members who also have different perspectives. And then going through the high school, I know last time, Mrs. Mar talked about the food pantry and Coach A. And what we came up with was, we are using the platform Venmo. And let's get that money that has been donated in the past week, and we're still lobbying outside and have students out there in the drop-off lines the morning for food pantry donations that are going to be transformed into gift card money that will then be allocated, like Stop &amp; Shop gift cards, stuff like that, that will be allocated amongst, because obviously, the usual canned food drive couldn't play out that way, just with tracing and obviously, all those other reasons. So the Venmo is at Friends of Cohasset Football. If anyone out there is listening, just a little publicity for something that's, Coach A was able to use the Green Team, which was a nice touch because we are split up into cohort A and B. And that's something he's involved, so it was a good way to get between both cohorts and being involved with this project.
That's fantastic. Thank you Caroline for that update. And it's nice to hear the students continuing to give during, you know, a time when there's a lot going on. So it's nice that we're continuing that thought process, and you get so much from giving, so it's appreciated. Chairman McClellan, any questions from the team? It's nice to have different perspectives here, so I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. Mrs. Colery, any questions for the student advisors?
No, it's great to meet you, Jake and Jenna. And Caroline, I just want to say, I personally was in a few positions early in life that gave me an opportunity to work on public speaking, and it was invaluable. So I want to encourage you all to continue to take opportunities that are presented for you to develop your leadership skills. And thank you all for being here.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Colery. Mr. Kearney, do you have any comments or questions?
Welcome aboard, I think this is great, especially the fact that Jake, I got to give you some credit bringing out the arts. A quick question for you. What do you think we could do safely to get the arts program going? Do you think we could do it Zoom, or do you think we could do in person with masks on? Because we've been trying to advocate getting the arts back together.
Yeah, I mean, I think in-person is really important because I think that's what really makes, just specifically theater, I think that's what makes it special. Even if you watch it online, that's not preferable, but I really think that, you know, like, it doesn't really work as well, and it's not as special. So I would say something in-person would definitely be optimal, and I do think it would be possible. Definitely different, but I do think there's a lot of potential there, and that would be, you know, interesting if we ride this out for a couple more months, hopefully. But, you know, knock on wood, but yeah.
Mr. Kearney, I do know that Mrs. Moriarty, Stephanie Moriarty, who's our director of fine music and fine arts, 6 through 12, they were working on some ideas and some thoughts. So perhaps, I know that Principal Scott is here next meeting on the 16th, and that might be a good question to ask him as he presents his school improvement plan. But Jake, hold tight, we're thinking, I know they're incredibly creative, as you would imagine. So they will, if anyone's going to figure out something that they can do, it's Mrs. Moriarty and team, I guarantee that. So, you know, if it can be done, they'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Mar, any questions or comments?
Welcome to Jake and Jenna. I really look forward to getting to know both of you during the course of this school year. And what I'd also be interested in, as you become more acclimated to what we do here on the committee, please feel free to ask us questions about why we do what we do, or how we do what we do, or how we're governed as elected officials under the open meeting law. There's certain things, like you can have a club meeting, and you don't have certain requirements, but we have certain requirements. So please don't ever hesitate to ask, like, why'd you make that motion? Or what's that, you know, agenda all about? Or why can't you talk about something that's not on the agenda? Please feel free. And Caroline, thanks for the update on Coach A. And I thought I saw that big Cohasset emergency vehicle trailer in the front field. And I'll get my son to teach me how to do a Venmo to make a donation, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar, Mrs. St. Orange.
I would also like to welcome you both to our meetings. It's so nice to have, as you were both saying, varied points of view and just new perspectives, and to bring the voice of your own voice and the student body. Jenna, I think I was your nursery school teacher at the carriage house, so making me feel a little bit old. Oh, you look taller, very grown up and mature, so welcome. I like to think I had a hand in you getting here. But welcome to both of you. I'm just thrilled to have, you know, as much student voice as possible. It's so nice for us to have a window into your lives and into school through your voices here, so thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. St. Orange. Yes, Jenna and Jake, welcome, welcome, welcome. We're so excited to have you, as you will hear us say time and time again, and as Caroline can probably attest, we are truly here for all of you and because of all of you. So it's such an important part of the meeting, and I just love that we incorporated this. I don't know, maybe a year or two ago, we started doing it, and it's just proven to be such a valuable resource. We, you know, from time to time, will certainly rely on your input and your insights and your advice. It's not a passive role, it's an active one. Jake, as you could just see from Mr. Kearney asking you about theater and your input there, things like that. And Caroline can attest to the fact that, you know, we've often asked her her input and what her, you know, sort of perspective is on certain issues, as, you know, obviously, most of what we discuss here relates to all of you and impact your lives. So we are just so truly appreciative of your willingness to take your time out of your night on, you know, every other Wednesday, and in the middle of a school week, and dedicate that to participation in this process, it's a very, very important role. And we hope that you find your participation in the school committee as enriching as we all do. So welcome and thank you. So Dr. Sullivan, at this point, what I'd like to do is sort of put the pause button on the superintendent's report. We have a fairly, I mean, it won't necessarily be quick, but I anticipated being a fairly quick issue to address in executive session. I think it's more appropriate to do that at the beginning of a meeting for reasons that will become evident when we return. For those of you that are watching, this webinar will remain open. We are going to either, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Skollins, did we figure out, and oh, Mrs. Raden is here as well. Did we figure out how we're going to do that logistically? We're going to go to a breakout room, or are we going to go to a separate link?
We did, we're actually going to use the separate link that was sent to the school committee, and I believe Dr. Skollins, who will join us on there. And then what we can do is, well, Jenna and Jake and Caroline will depart and get a good night's sleep for school tomorrow. And I guess it would be Sue and Lisa and Barbara can just mute and turn off your camera, and then we'll come back to this meeting. And I'll keep it going, and we'll come back to it. So the school committee members can actually depart and then come back.
Can we resend that link? I didn't see that, I saw the email about a breakout room and not.
I can forward it back to you.
Thank you.
I'm saying on short. And so, and before we do this, though, I need to, Mrs. Mar, I'm sorry, does see your hand?
Yeah, I don't have the link either.
Okay, well, Doc Skollins, as I'm talking, would you mind recirculating it?
I'll resend.
Everyone can get it. And can you use Mr. Kearney's alternative email as well, just so we make sure he gets it? So just as we're doing this, though, I'm going to need to take a motion in a second, but I'm just explaining to the student advisors, because Caroline's been here for a while, but Jake and Jenna may not know what's going on. This isn't normal, so you guys will see there's an agenda, and towards the bottom of each agenda is executive session. That's sort of reserved for matters that require some level of confidence, and that only the school committee members are privy to, and certain members of the administration for a number of reasons. It's something that the general laws, master's general laws accounts for in these sort of open meetings. So we generally do it at the end, but we're doing it now for, as I said, reasons that we become parent when we return. And you are all welcome to stay. We were doing the student advisor update so that you're able to leave earlier and not have to wait for that, because you probably have homework and such to do. So feel completely free to either stay or go, whatever you want to do. It's up to you, but we'll be, you know, and I'll say this for everyone watching at home right now, too. Well, we shouldn't be too, too long, and obviously, I wouldn't seek this motion right now and try and rearrange the agenda if I thought it was going to lead to a long delay. I don't anticipate that, so we should be back fairly quickly, just so everyone knows. So just stay tuned in, and we'll be back. So at this time, I'd like to, all right, entertain and seek a motion to advance the executive session from later in the agenda to now. Is there a motion to that effect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Orange. All in favor, please indicate so in roll call, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously passes, so we will advance executive session to this time in the agenda. At this point, we need a separate motion to enter into executive session for reason number three, related to strategy, related to the collective bargaining process, the CTA. Is there such a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar, thank you. All in favor, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously passes, so we will move into executive session at this time. And does everyone have the link now? Everyone get it?
They should all have it. So I'll pause, and the school committee can actually leave this meeting?
Yep.
And then go back in afterwards, using your panelist invite, if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay, and Jenna and Caroline and Jake, I'll see you this week, right? Do we have a meeting this week, I mean, next week, next week? So have a great weekend.
Mrs. Mar, what's the question?
So I just, I just looked at Dr. Skollins's email.
There's a link in it that says, click the link.
On my Outlook either. Ellen, it worked on my phone, but it didn't come through in my email on my desktop.
Yeah.
I'm trying to hit it, it's going nowhere on my phone.
All right, let me try and resend it. I'll just send it as a link, I won't embed it, okay? And see if that works.
Yeah, sometimes the embedding can. I'm going to pause the recording at this point.
Sure. Okay, let's get started back up. Everyone at home, so sorry for that, that was inadvertent cancellation of the webinar. We were trying to get cute there and attempt to have an executive session early on, so that we come back and make some announcements publicly while everyone was still here, rather than doing it at the end of the meeting when everyone logs off and doesn't hear it. So ended up partially backfiring, but we're happy to see some people back in the meeting. So at this point, Dr. Sullivan, I think we'll continue the superintendent's report, perhaps update on the MOA with the CTA, is that was something that we just addressed?
Sure, absolutely. So as the folks at home know, I sent a message yesterday, just confirming that we are moving with our plans to have, or the fact we are going to have alternating Wednesdays in person, beginning on December 9th, which is next Wednesday, that's the first Wednesday, and that'll be cohort A. And I did include in the message that, something that we had expressed earlier, but we were not specific about, and that is the ending times for those alternating Wednesdays. The middle of the high school will maintain their full day ending time as they do every day in Cohasset at the middle of the high school. But the elementary schools will have a slightly abbreviated day with the Deer Hill ending at 1:15, and Ausgood ending at 1:20. And the lunch will be served at all buildings during alternating Wednesdays. Elementary students will have a recess, as well as the lunch I had mentioned. And that was really, and I did mention that principals will be sending over the next couple of days more information regarding the learning models, and any information that you need to know regarding any switches of Zoom times or anything in that regard. But we're very happy to be able to offer more in-person learning. And I know that the, you know, obviously, in just an executive session, part of the memorandum of agreement, which is an MOA, that we've been working on really diligently with the CTA. And, you know, the CTA has worked really hard as well to try to, you know, to come to terms with us so that we're moving forward in one direction. And we have made really good ground on that MOA. So Chairman McClellan, I don't know if it's appropriate at this point for you to announce what happened to end executive session in regards to that.
It is appropriate. So the school committee has voted to adopt the memorandum of agreement with the CTA. So you've heard us speak of our bargaining obligations throughout this roller coaster of a fall semester. And this is sort of culminated with a great many hours on the part of both the CTA and members of district leadership and the school committee bargaining with the CTA. And so, you know, we've ratified the terms of the agreement that we've reached with the CTA at this point, and we voted to implement the terms of that agreement. And one of those, one of the terms, of course, is the remote Wednesdays converting into alternating, excuse me, alternating in-person Wednesdays, which is why I said at the outset of the meeting that hopefully, this today will be the last full remote district-wide Wednesday that we have ever again in Cohasset, with any luck. So that's where we're at, and hopefully, that will, unfortunately, is a lengthy process, and it led to, both at the outset of the school year and now, it led to us having to sort of not be able to give, you know, definitive plans to folks. And we tried, and we were very cognizant the entire time of giving people as much lead time as possible to plan. We're doing the very best we could with that. But we have fulfilled those obligations at this point, and we are moving on. So you have your definitive answer on Wednesdays. And of course, Dr. Sullivan, I think you sent out a district-wide message anyway to that effect, I think. What was it, yesterday or today?
It was yesterday, and I have had it in my, you know, of course, since October 28th, I've had it in all of my newsletters. But, you know, the words pending were in there, and this was just, you know, a way for us to make sure folks knew that this was indeed happening.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Sullivan, for the lead on that. And then there's the update on the MOA, so if we can perhaps move on to the next item in the superintendent's report?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just say a little bit about, you know, our health situation where we are right now. As folks know, the state data comes out on Thursdays, although last week, it came out on a Friday, which so it included, the daily data actually included Thanksgiving in that. It was a two-day data instead of a one-day data. But I will continue to update the community on Thursdays as to where we are in the metrics. You saw last week, we were actually, we went down in terms of our cases in the percentage of cases in our town. We were in the unshaded category, which is reserved in, and the new metrics for a town that is 10,000 or below, 10 or less positive cases, so actually moved down a little bit. We have, as you know from my communications, had, over the last couple of weeks, a few, or actually, the, so total in the district in terms of our school community, since the start of school, we've had five confirmed cases. I just want to make that clear because it can get lost in the shuffle. It's certainly far less than the communities around us. I communicate to you when I'm given the okay to do so by our Department of Public Health. And that has typically been when we've had a confirmed PCR test, which is the gold standard in testing, through the Maven system, which is our system that tracks those cases. However, because there may be a time lag now, I'm going to be moving forward to communicate positives when they're antigen tests. So there's been really no lag because we've had so little. But as of now, you know, we're going to kind of eliminate that and be preemptive in our communicating to the community. Keep in mind that we immediately, upon a probable or a confirmed positive, work with our DPH to do contact tracing. And when I say we, it's really our head nurse, all the school nurses, and then, of course, Mary Goodwin, who is our town nurse. And they do a fabulous job of keeping us all safe and of making sure that our, any contacts that have happened. In the recent cases, there were no contacts within Cohasset public schools. And anyone who is associated with those individuals outside of school was immediately informed. So we're really, knock on wood, in a, and still a very solid situation comparatively moving forward, being in the lowest level of the metrics, which could shift. But right now, we're in a good spot, and then our cases are very low and controlled within our school community. We're constantly watching. We're constantly watching that. And, you know, like I've said many times, that we're we're moving forward. Because of the data that we have in front of us and that data shifts, we certainly will act appropriately as you know, we we have in the past. And we would move to to another model, but we feel confident and comfortable with where we are right now moving into. Into what will be a tough time for all of us. There's no question about it. So we, you know, we need to need to keep an eye on things. But we we are very committed to keeping our safe protocols and to to make sure we. Include the social distancing measures that have helped us achieve some success in a very difficult time. So I just wanted to say that about our health situation right at this point as we sit and talk.
And just to put that in perspective, Dr. Sullivan or Dr. Scollins, what's the approximate current enrollment total district-wide students right now?
About fifteen fifteen hundred.
Okay, so. Yeah, so if you take fifteen hundred, ten percent of that is one fifty, one percent of that is fifteen. So we're talking about a fraction of a percent in terms of total cases.
So remember Craig also, when we were talking school community members, so we also have, you know, over two hundred staff to include in that.
So making the number even larger and the fraction of the single percentage even smaller. So we're talking about, you know, I ninety nine point, you know, seven percent. Or something like that where, you know, there has been no infections whatsoever. And as you mentioned, Dr. Sullivan. You know, it hasn't been cases that were, you know, confirmed as having arisen from the school community itself. Just members of the school community that that became affected.
Yeah, and and, you know, I that is very true. But when we say things like that, I just still want people to know that we're really being cautious and looking at where we are. I I'm not an individual who just, you know, let's go forward because we need to go forward. We we wanna be very mindful of the risks we're taking and balancing that with the benefits of in-person learning. Balancing where we are with the data in our town and in our in our school community. So that's that's really where we are. And yes, Chairman McClellan, I think we we are fortunate right now that we're in at least a good spot. But we're in a tough time. So we're balancing those things as we're moving forward.
And we will, of course, continue to employ those safety measures and protocols that have gotten us to this point and how to enjoy those those those. You know, positive infection rates, or maybe positive isn't the right adjective, but, you know, advantageous or beneficial infection rates. And I don't I don't I don't mean to suggest that we're gonna rest on our laurels. Just I wanted to put in perspective for folks to see. You know, how well the system has been working so far. And of course, knock on wood, you know, as you mentioned, we do have difficult times to to enter into here. And hopefully we will continue on the same path. But I just wanted to put in perspective as you were making that health update. So thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
That's great. Thank you, Craig. If I'll continue on then, if that's okay. So moving next, I I do have Lisa Radden, who is our Director of Technology and Digital Learning. And I have, of course, Dr. Scollins here for this part of the update. We have some exciting, as you as you are well aware. Technology and instructional technology has become a major part of our lives. It it was before this, but it's it's even more so now. And the the need to have significant and meaningful professional development for our staff as we move forward, you know, is certainly paramount. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dark Scollins with Lisa Radden to talk about the upcoming professional development. In December and then in January. So I'll turn it over to Dark Scollins and Lisa Radden.
Great, thank you so much. So I'll start out and then I'll turn it over to Lisa. So we have on December fourteenth, we have a half-day PD for our staff. And the elementary is going to continue their work with the math program bridges that we are implementing. So we have the same trainers they had in the beginning of the year are returning to work with both Ausgood staff and our Deer Hill staff. Related to where they're at right now and working with them, answering questions. And then also addressing some of the issues that they have come up with from a survey that the consultants have sent out to the staff. So that will be a really targeted in targeted professional development opportunity for them. And then we'll continue with that throughout the year. These these consultants that we're using are have a good relationship with our staff. And are very responsive to any of their needs. And they have been especially helpful to our math specialists because they've been working with them throughout. So that's what's happening at the elementary for teachers and special education teachers and ESPs. But Lisa's gonna talk a little bit about all of the PD that she's planned for not only the fourteenth, but into January. So I'll turn it over to you, Lisa.
Great, thanks, Leslie. So we're looking at December fourteenth as an opportunity for staff to revisit what they've learned so far. And to share and also to try new strategies and tools. Our overall guiding question of the day is which technology tools and digital learning strategies. Will best help my students achieve the desired learning goals and outcomes? And the afternoon will be virtual over Zoom and then broken up into a couple of different sessions that people can do can attend. As Leslie said, the the majority of the elementary staff will be attending the Math Bridges session. But the elementary specialists will be attending a digital learning session with Cassie O'Brien, our amazing IT specialist in the elementary schools. She'll be facilitating a session where they'll be exposed to a number of tools and practices and discuss ways that these tools and strategies. Can best fit the variety of instructional needs that they have. Our middle and high school staff will be asked to to will given the opportunity to choose from two different sessions that will be going on that day. And these sessions will be led by trainers from EdTech Teacher. So edtechteacher.org was the organization that ran a lot of the remote learning PD. At the beginning of the year. They'll be able to give their first and second choice for December fourteenth. And then they'll be able to actually get their second choice on the January eleventh PD day. So so everyone in middle school and high school be able to attend these two sessions by January eleventh. And kind of kick off the new year with some new tools and strategies. The two session topics are, one, assessments and remote learning, where they'll focus on, the trainer will be focusing on the question. How do I assess student learning and diversify my assessment methods in a remote classroom? The second session is entitled collaborative digital learning experiences. And this will be focusing on ways to design lessons that facilitate student-to-student collaboration in a hybrid environment. And then thirdly, our special education staff will be attending another session that is also hosted by our EdTech teacher trainer. Entitled assistive technology tools and strategies, where they're looking at how can I leverage Chrome extensions to provide for differentiation? While allowing students access to the curriculum. The day, so those each of those sessions are about an hour and a half. And then the day will wrap up with a sandbox session with me. I'll be hosting a Zoom with a number of breakout rooms and staff will be able to choose a breakout room based on a topic that was addressed earlier in the day. Or co-plan with each other in team meeting rooms and just have a chance to kind of try and kind of digest what they what they were exposed to earlier in the day. Really excited about the sessions and it's really been a great collaborative effort, kind of designing the agenda and figuring out what kinds of tools. And apps and extensions are most relevant to the staff. The staff were sent a survey, but also it's a combination of collecting observational data. And having conversations with folks over the past couple of months, as well as our, you know, our school leaders. And department heads have actually met with EdTech teacher trainers to co-design the agenda. So just really excited about it and also excited about like learning from staff, how to go and getting feedback so that it can inform future future sessions. And ongoing support. So I'm just really looking forward to the day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was really great. And I I think that's gonna be a huge boon to the to the district. Should be very, very valuable. And one of the many reasons why we're excited to have Mrs. Radden aboard here. So.
It's been wonderful, Lisa, to have Lisa meeting with various teachers. You know, she's had a full full calendar meeting with them to help them on specific questions they might have. And then also to meet with groups, grade levels, as she said, building leaders, department heads. Really strengthening our approach and, you know, creating a, you know, what we we like to hope is an innovative mindset. In our 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 school community. That's what we're striving for, that using that curious nature, the energy that's been developed. From the from the remote learning and just making sure that we continue with that. So we are definitely fortunate to have her. So I'm sorry if I cut you off there, Chairman McClellan.
No, I was just gonna invite the any any of the members of school committee, if they had any questions about it to to ask, just go around the circle. If you have any questions, Mrs. Colery, any questions?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney.
No, I think it's a great program. I'm glad to see it working so well.
Mrs. Marr.
Nope, no, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Saint Orange.
I just wanna thank you, Leslie and Lisa, for planning such a thoughtful PD. It's so nice to have a moment to pause and reflect amidst such a high-paced. Or fast-paced school year in which, you know, everyone was asked to dive in headfirst and has done so beautifully. But what a nice opportunity to to give advantage of some training. Here we are at mid-year. So thanks for planning that.
Okay, thank you all. Dr. Sullivan, the next agenda item in the superintendent's report, please.
Yes, and I'll let, actually, I'll let Lisa depart if she'd like at this point.
Thank you. I'll take care. Have a good night.
Take care, Lisa. Thank you very much. Thanks for persevering through the the first part of it. Have a good night. So, Dr. Scollins, if you wanna continue with your update regarding RISE and then maybe if you could update a little on our social emotional resources. Which would be nice for this committee to know there.
I will do both. All right, hoping you can see my screen. Can you see? Okay, fabulous. All right, I'm gonna move you guys over here. So, as you know, we have the RISE program, which is a collaboration between the Recreation Department. And the Cohasset Public Schools, and that is our before and after-school program. And it kicked off this year and it's going very well. Brett Yooms, who is our humans, who is our PE teacher at Deer Hill, he is actually the coordinator of the program. So he is there every morning greeting those students with his staff. And also then brings his Deer Hill students from Deer Hill over to Ausgood in the afternoon. So I just like share a few pictures. I'm going to, we have this. Let's see, whoops. Maybe, okay, there we go. And so we have it broken down to cohort A and cohort B. So those students that are in cohort A on Mondays and Tuesdays will attend and then vice versa on Thursday, on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. And then we have added Wednesdays in. So parents now have the opportunity to register to have their student there every other Wednesday, based on their cohort. Our cohort A is a little light. Our cohort B is has more students involved, probably around fourteen or fifteen. And our cohort A is a little bit light with three, four, or five students depending on those days. So big plug for anybody who is interested. They're doing all sorts of activities. As you can see, this was when it was a little bit warmer out. And obviously during the Halloween season, you can see their faces. They're following all the protocols that we do for safety. You can see they have snack time. So every once in a while, they get a little break with their masks. You can see some outdoor play and more jungle gym. And obviously, we have a very new play structure and they are enjoying it. As much time as they can. They really are spending a lot of time outside as best they can. So so it's a great program. So anybody who is interested. Please go to, you can go to the Recreation Department website and you can sign up for RISE. So they're doing a great job. I've been over several times and the kids are having a great time. They get breakfast in the morning. They have snack in the afternoon. So it's it's been a really, it's been a great collaborative. So I'm thrilled that it's happening.
And Dr. Scollins, a great job on that. And also, you know, just for folks to remember, this was a pledge that we made. As we were doing our Start Schools later, that we would provide this. So this isn't gonna go anywhere. And I we believe, you know, clearly we're in a pandemic, so that keeps the crowds down a bit a bit. But we do believe as we move forward that this will be a very popular program because it's a great program and it's a very nice town collaboration. And this will be there for folks as we clear the pandemic as well. So thank you, Dr. Scollins, for your efforts. And Ted Carroll and Brett Humans and the folks.
It's really been wonderful to have, you know, to have this collaboration. So I'm really thrilled about that. So it's 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 really wonderful. And now I'm going to share my screen again. It always feels so not smooth when I do this. All right, let's see how we do. All right. Okay, and then the next thing that we've been working on, I've been working with Cassie O'Brien along with all of the adjustments counselors. To create a kind of a one-stop shopping on our website for social emotional resources. So this is under the community section on our page, but it's also linked to each school. And you can come through here. This is actually with the nurses. They've created an amazing amount of links and resources for for people to. Partake in. Each school has their own. So for example, if you go to Deer Hill, I hope, did it switch over to the page? Okay, good. So each person has, each school has created their own webpages. And within that is all sorts of information. There's resources that you can click on to. You can, there's obviously the people that are part of the webpage. So you have, you know, Mrs. Dolan. You also will have Mrs. Costa. So it's actually, if I can, there we go. But you can see that if I scroll down. All the information is right there. It's very nicely done and each person is building it out. So we will continue to work with Cassie to keep adding resources. So there's weekly links. There's some services. You can see this is Costa. And if you click on resources, there's articles, there's how-tos and strategies. Around how to calm yourself down. Same for if you go to the middle school and high school. Mrs. Emily Manuel and Leah McCarthy also have done a lot as to as has done Dave Vinton at Ausgood. So they continue to grow this. These things all existed, but we were finding that not everybody knew where they were. So Dr. Sullivan suggested that we pull it all together on a webpage. I called Cassie. And Cassie, being the the wonderkin that she is, pulled that all together for us. So continue to watch it because it's going to keep growing.
Yeah, it's great. It's and it's something we'll make sure and bring it bring attention to as we move forward because there's a lot there. And there's a lot that we can point people towards.
Right.
When someone has a situation. So often there's a a moment when someone would call, you know, a counselor and be asking about something. And the counselor can say, you know, just some resources that would be great for you would be here. And then it can really take off. And there's a lot of a lot of supports that we can provide as a school. These are just sort of some some benchmark benchmarks. Supports that everybody can take advantage of. So I'm glad that's up and running. And it's it's great that we have educators who are so caring and thoughtful to put that together.
Yeah, they did a terrific job.
So, okay, so moving along, I wanted to have a just a brief discussion about snow days. We when where we stand with that. If the committee isn't aware, the commissioner is given sort of local license. To the various school districts to determine how they'll handle school snow days. Will they indeed create a situation where we have remote learning that might take the place of a snow day? Or will we stick with traditional snow days? And I want the committee to know, we've been working on this as a leadership team. And kicking around ideas and thoughts. Our plan is right now to have a a proposal for the school committee. On the sixteenth that would would be up for you to approve one way or the other. We also, we're we're gonna be taking an input from our staff too. Our leadership team unanimously wants to create a situation. Obviously, the school committee will will vote on this, but where we are able to use some of our remote learning to keep our. Our the contiguous learning happening in our school community so that we do not have to take a traditional snow day. Some of the things we have to be mindful of that with that, though, are the the power outages, the thoughts that maybe we need a window of time. When assignments might be due. You know, we want the information to be contemporary and not something that, you know, was just on a shelf. And then you pull out some bogus assignments or some assignments that aren't necessarily tied into what we're doing. Our our educators wouldn't create bogus assignments, but I mean, assignments that aren't necessarily linked to what we're doing currently. We want it to be current. And I believe the staff's gonna want that too. So we have a little work to do in articulating that, but we do anticipate having a draft of a proposal for school committee to vote on at the next meeting. I don't want to go too much further with it right now, but I, I wanted to get, you know, sort of your wheels turning on this. But the, the overwhelming feeling from the leadership team is that we want to try to eliminate snow days with the current remote learning models that we, that we have in place. So I don't know if you want any discussion about that now, Chair McClellan, or want to wait till the sixteenth when we really are able to lay it out for you a little more clearly?
Well, I think it makes sense to wait until you have the proposal before us to do that. But if any, I'm certainly not going to restrict anyone's voice. You're all elected just as much as I am. So if you have anything to say, please, please say it. Otherwise, I think it makes sense to hear them out and what they've sort of collaborated on before we start asking questions that may be premature.
Sometimes it's good to hear some voices from the committee as we're in the process of planning and not just, you know, at the end of, of a proposal. So, you know, I just thought maybe we'd socialize it a bit at this meeting before we come to a vote.
I would like to make sure we're getting community input on how they feel remote learning days are going versus in-person days. And I think right now people are looking at their experience as sort of like a collective between remote and in-person, and there may be, oh, I, I would just be interested to see whether they would prefer a day off or another remote day.
Yeah, that's something that we can definitely get out there as well. I think that's a smart move. It's something that we talked about briefly as a leadership, too, is getting some, some community input. That's, that's a, a really good suggestion. Ashley, what are the thoughts of the, of the leadership team? The twenty-third of June is, is a rather late last day without additional snow days.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind for this year as well. And that was one of the thoughts that we had. But yeah, gaining community input is a great idea and something we'll do.
Anybody else at this point? All right, seeing no comments thus far, Dr. Sullivan, I'll just, I, I'll presume that everyone feels similar, or takes a similar perspective as I do, and we'll wait to hear what your leadership team and what your faculty has collaborated on, and we'll discuss it in a little bit more detail and share thoughts with you and questions and comments at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Greg. And then I, I think maybe you wanted to talk a little bit about the, the remote learning decisions, Chair McClellan. The idea of, you know, obviously, we were just faced with a very difficult. One thing I very much respect about the committee is they're letting the leadership team make some operational decisions. However, many of the operational decisions this year have been so enormous. For instance, the whole, the whole remote learning plan, I'm sorry, the whole roadmap to reentry that we created. You know, there really, these operational decisions, I feel, you know, do require input and collaboration. And I deeply respect the collaborative nature of the school committee with this administration. You know, so the, the, one of the thoughts here is that when we do have a major decision regarding going fully remote, if we are in that, that situation again, for a building, or albeit maybe the district, that we do have some school committee voice included in, in that decision. And I want, I say that wholeheartedly appreciating the operational duty that I have. But, you know, it, it, it does, I think, bear some discussion. And so I, Craig, and I thought that it would be a good idea to have some of that discussion here about what the school committee advises will be the protocol. If indeed, you know, the data determines, or a situation determines, that we have to shift our learning model as we did with the, the last situation. So Craig, I don't know if you want to lead that discussion.
Sure. So you would not take credit for someone else's suggestion. This was, this was a suggestion that was sent to me from one of the members of, of our very, you know, school-centric and academically interested community, which is, which is a huge value to us as a school committee to have. And this is, I think, an example in motion of that. The, the sort of initial suggestion was that, and, and I, I think we can consider any number of alternatives or leave it how it is. The, the sort of specific suggestion was like, should there be some ability for the superintendent to decide that, you know, we need to move into full remote operations, but because it's an impactful decision, that that decision is made on sort of an emergency basis, and then the school committee would convene at the earliest reasonable opportunity to have a more, sort of more thorough and comprehensive discussion at the public level about that decision. And, and it's, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a fairly good point, and, and, and I think that I agree with it on a number of levels. So I, I won't, I'll, I'll let, you know, the school committee discuss, you know, your, your whole perspective on this issue, whether you feel like it, it sort of rests with the superintendent, and that, you know, just sort of similar to a snow day, superintendent makes the decision. And then that's something that we, we live with. Or I see, Dr. Sullivan, you want to say something? I'll turn it over to you in a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or, or if you feel that there's some, needs to be some sort of, some sort of revision to our current protocol. So, Dr. Sullivan, what did you have to add?
No, I just wanted to add the idea of it being, you know, an emergent criteria situation. I think we need to establish what that will be. Of giving an example, when, in March, on March thirteenth, when we decided to, you know, close schools, we did have a, an emergency meeting of the school committee, and we discussed it. And the support behind what I thought was the appropriate decision at the time was, was vital. It was crucial to, to making sure that we had, you know, momentum and consensus, and it was a collaborative effort. And I, I just, it's those types of emergent situations that I think it is important to, to gather that. And it goes a little bit beyond, I, I would say way beyond, just a regular operational decision. So that would be what I would advocate for, is those kind of emergent moments that, as the criteria for when the school committee would come in and, and help in one of those decisions. I think that's kind of important to set where that line is.
Thank you for that question. It's useful. And Mrs. Collier, do you have any thoughts on this issue?
Um, I do, I think. I think to Dr. Sullivan's point, for me, this is less a question of oversight and more, I, more that I would advocate for us having some involvement simply to demonstrate the collaborative nature of sort of a significant decision like that. I wouldn't question whether Dr. Sullivan and his team would make the right decision. I would want to make sure that the community would have the opportunity to see that we support that decision.
Yeah, and I would say, to me, support is not, and I don't think you, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, Ashley, but just from my point of view, support isn't necessarily agreeing with me. It's taking an idea and being a thought partner and making sure that we make the right decision for the community. So even if it isn't an agreement, for me, that's supportive, because we're, we're making sure that of the collective voices, what's right for the community in these extremely emergent situations. That's, that's the distinction I'm making as a thought for you.
And I, I do recall the meeting in March, and I feel like those conversations that happen around decisions like that are important. And it's important to do that in a setting that the community can access. And so I, yeah, I, I would, I would agree that it would be, if wherever possible, beneficial to have some school committee involvement in the decision to go full remote again.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Collier. Mr. Kearney, oh, we think we lost Mr. Kearney.
Oh.
So we'll move on to Mrs. Marr. Do you have thoughts on this issue, Mrs. Marr?
Um, sure. Thank, thank you for, you know, wanting to include the committee on, you know, when these decisions happen. And I think what we've all seen this year are things no one has ever seen before. And so when we had that meeting, it was an emergency meeting. Craig had actually reached out to me and said, I, this is going on because I was away, and we should probably meet. And I don't think any of the educators here tonight had ever been in a situation where we had a pandemic. So it was, it was kind of novel ground for all of us to kind of say, you know, gosh, what do we do? What do we do? And I think that was the right thing to do. I think, you know, Dr. Sullivan, you've, you've used the word emergent. And I think we've been through a cycle where we have, you, you've made a decision about closing the schools because of, you know, potential exposure. And so we've kind of been through that. So there's a, I'll speak for myself. I have a level of trust in your decision-making in, in doing that, because you approached it methodically and carefully and collaboratively with all of the people in town, you know, public health agents and, and the, the fire chief and the police chief. So I guess I'm thinking, so what would, you know, you can't say there's never going to be another new situation, because there will be another new situation. But if we were to, to me, you know, how do we structure, when you have to make a decision quickly, as this last one was made over a weekend, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, how do, how do we comply with open meeting law, get a meeting posted in forty-eight hours, and allow you the time to make the decision and the preparations for the result of that decision? So that would just be details that I think that we would have to work out how, how we do it. You know, can, can we under a state of emergency, which I believe this Commonwealth still is, have another emergency meeting? Maybe that's a mechanism we can do that by. But I think the, the logistics of it are something we, we would need to work on.
I completely agree. And to that point, Mrs. Marr, I know that the, the community member that, that raised this issue was advocating for some sort of objective criteria to address and sort of run through every time a decision was to be made. So that sort of runs along the lines of what you were saying. I don't know that we're going to be in a position to establish that sort of consideration, but, but at least I think tonight we might be able to come to a consensus as to whether or not certain, as Dr. Sullivan describes them, emergent situations would require more community-driven decisions that, you know, the school committee would be involved in. But as far as the particulars of it, I, I think, tonight, I was hoping we could do is just determine whether or not there would be a, a certain process in which, or, or which would implicate school committee involvement in this sort of situation. I don't know that we get into specifics tonight, but, but no, I, I, but I take your comments, and, and I think it, it is, you know, it may, may, may make sense. Dr. Sullivan, I saw you wanted to say something.
No, I just want to make it clear, like, on the other end, I'm comfortable making decisions, like, because I am methodical in what I'm doing. And I, you know, I, I obviously hit a certain point, and I feel very strongly about making a decision. This is just getting some voice, you know, particularly if it's a long-term decision, like a couple-week closure of a school, for instance, or of a district. That would be really the major situation that, that I'd want to get those, that voice on. So that's really, you know, and whether we create an objective steps that we have to look at, or, you know, that, that really isn't, for me, as important as just hearing the voice of this committee to, to kind of, you know, guide a major decision like that, just as I use your voice to help guide the decision when, you know, we ended up. Because if you remember, that we, we closed school before the governor actually made the order to do so. Because based on the conversations I was having with town officials, my team, it, it was the prudent and what I felt safe thing to do, and the committee actually agreed with that. Had you not agreed with that, that was going to be very important voice for me as a decision was made. So that's kind of what I'm thinking and looking for in that regard.
Okay, Mrs. Sanange.
Yeah, I think, just to build upon what other members have said, it is nice to have a visible team discussion. Dr. Sullivan has expressed to us many times, and we know that he is not making these decisions in a vacuum. He's discussing this with people throughout our community, the Department of Health, our emergency management committees. I don't know the exact term for that. But I think it is nice to have, to have the community feel like they are in on it. I think this is a time unlike anything we've experienced, and it feels good to feel like we know what's going on and what's being discussed. And so Ellen makes a great point. It's not, the timing doesn't always work out. But when possible, I think it makes sense to have a discussion surrounding a very major decision.
Okay, so I agree, and, and I sort of alluded to that in the beginning. I, and I do want to make clear, I don't, I don't, I don't want, I don't want this to be interpreted as a discussion centered around the superintendent's ability to make these decisions. I am one hundred percent confident in Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins's abilities to make decisions concerning the direction of our district. And that would include decisions about whether or not to close school, move into full remote operations, or what have you. I, I have, I am in particular support of this because I feel like it is a very impactful decision, and it affects the community at large. But I feel like it takes the, the onus off of one person that is unfairly sort of, I think, that it's placed on one person, and, and one person bears that on their shoulders. And I don't, I don't, I don't see the need for that. I think that it can be something that as a, as a community through the school committee, you know, there is maybe a little bit of additional support provided to the superintendent in making the decision in very specific circumstances. You know, like the circumstances that we had just encountered with the, you know, the, the party, and we had to make a decision quickly. And that's what obviously precipitated this entire discussion. So that's, that's my feeling. And I just want to make it clear that I, I don't think any of this is a criticism of the superintendent's decisions thus far, or his, any sort of ability to make decisions. I just want to make that clear. But, Dr. Sullivan, you want to say something again?
No, I, 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 I'm not taking that as, as that at all. I, I think it's just good to have a collective voice in anything we do, and it's good to hear other ideas and thoughts. So, I mean, I, I am going to have to make decisions that, if it's an emergent moment, and I will do that in the manner I've gone about doing it, which is to, you know, to consult with those folks I need to consult with and to make a, a decision. However, you know, if it's a long-lasting, long-term binding decision, I think it might be important for us to try to meet, to make sure that we're going in the right direction, because I, I'm constantly listening, and I, and I, and I certainly want to do what's right by the community in every context. And I just think that this group is a good representation of the entire community. So that's all. I, I just, I'm actually in favor of it under very, you know, emergent situations that would be long-term and binding to have a discussion. It might be a discussion regarding a decision. So in other words, I've made a decision, and then maybe there's, it's a few days because of the ability to get us together. And then we get together and, and, and talk about that as a long-term thing, or, you know, whatever the period may be. It's just because these are unprecedented times, and there's some operational decisions that I think are, the magnitude is, is much larger than it's been in the past. It's not a snow day. It's not a, you know, a decision for a, a particular curriculum that we're moving towards or something. I mean, these are, you know, we're going to shut down school for months. I mean, these are really big decisions that I just, I, I think we have a good collective voice here, and I'm, I'm actually encouraging that voice to, to help guide a decision that I've made or reflect on a decision I've made. I, I don't think, if the decision is that big, I think it is important to bring a collective voice into it. I feel that way with, you know, all my decisions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So I, I, I see Mr. Kearney join the meeting. I want to get his thoughts as well, and then I'll have a suggestion as to how we specifically proceed here. Mr. Kearney, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm sorry, my computer.
No, no problem. No, no problem, we're just, we're just, we're discussing the issue of. Of in in emergency situations when the superintendent must revert to. To full remote operations, whether or not that warrants some school committee involvement in making that decision permanent. So in other words, obviously, you know, the superintendent, if confronted with this information. Or some information that would perhaps warrant a full remote operations on a Tuesday night. Um, it's unlikely that, you know, people are going to be able to, the school committee is going to be able to convene to make that decision, and unreasonable to expect that. So he would have to make the decision based on the criteria he's always considered and 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 in consultation with the individuals he's always consulted with. But the question is, is at some point thereafter, in the in the very, you know, you know, near future after that decision is made. Should the school committee become involved if there is a sort of a a long term impact on the district, so that it's a sort of a more community driven. Decision through the school committee, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I actually just kind of almost like, I I'm in favor of what Dr. Sullivan would would propose. I think that. Uh, I think that he could handle that, you know? I don't think that school committee needs to get involved, unless it unless it does, like you said, if it is a long term. Uh, solution, then yeah, I think we could, we could have a conversation about it.
Okay, um, so so here's what, I mean, I think we need to have some firm consensus here in terms of moving towards the whole point of having discussion, so here's what I would suggest. Taking everyone's perspectives into consideration, I would suggest that. That if the superintendent is called upon to make a decision in which. We revert to full remote operations in. In a building or or the entire district, so at least one whole building. Um, and that full remote operate, and that decision will impact that building or the district for more than one week. Um, then the school committee should meet within. Within three days. Of the time the decision is made. To discuss that, deliberate on that, and make a decision as to whether or not we. Essentially, agree with that decision or not. Um, my, my. The basis for the three days, some people might say, well, why not the next business day or forty eight hours? Um, because I feel like half the point of having us. Discuss it is not just so the five of us can give our thoughts, it's also to sort of get a feel for. Um, how the community has been impacted, and I think that would allow us to. Um, not only obviously schedule it, because not all of us can, not five of us can be around, you know, the very next day. Um, but I think it would get us, it it gives us an ability to sort of. You know, get get some thoughts, gather some input from people on the decision and make a a more sort of informed. Decision, have a have a more meaningful discussion on it. Um, I think a week is appropriate because we're going to be, you know, you know. Losing, you know, an amount of in person learning there that isn't, that is not insignificant, but it's it's not so insignificant, so significant that it's, you know. Deleterious. And so that is, that is my suggestion and. And I think one building or the entire district, so at least one building, I think, in other words, if we're contact tracing and we have to have. You know, a few sections or a class or something, I don't know that the school committee needs to be involved in that. Decision, I think the superintendent is well outfitted to make that decision on his own. Um, along with the consult of the assistant superintendent and the other town health officials and safety officials. Um, so that is, that's my suggestion, it's just a suggestion, it's what I came up with in thinking about this. What are, what are, I don't know, what are people's thoughts on on the on the details of that?
I would suggest considering. Two weeks as the threshold rather than one week. For posting purposes and. Scheduling and impact. That the length of the closure would have.
From a, you know, obviously, a COVID standpoint, two weeks is. Makes, has some sense because it's a, you know, usually the quarantine period, although. You know, granted, they're shifting the actual quarantine language a bit, it still amounts to essentially two weeks, so. That might be logical, Ashley.
Ms. Mar.
I like the idea of of having a period of time to let the decision sink in with the community and and get their feedback. Um, in in quasi real time. But I'm a bit confused. Because. It seems to me that a decision to close a building is going to happen rather rapidly. Based on information, it's not a a multi day process. Of decision making, and correct me if I'm wrong. We get a report, we have a situation, we have an incident, and within twenty four to forty eight hours, a decision is made. So the decision is made and and the plan is executed based off that decision. So I I I don't envision us, I like meeting about it and talking about it and getting community input for it. And being supportive of of the decision, but I don't know that we would change the decision. And I just want to have every, make sure that I'm understanding this process correctly, we. We wouldn't come in three days later and say, okay, well, no, we think we should keep the school open, or we think it should only be seventh grade and not the whole middle school. I just want to make sure I'm clear on on what, how we're approaching this.
Well, that's the point. Uh, what you just said, I mean. I I think maybe some folks feel that. Everyone's perspectives, you know, or the community's perspectives through the school committee need to be taken in consideration, and perhaps. The consensus would be, no, we think that the call was, you know, where, you know, you you maybe you decided to close the entire district, but so let's use the last example. I mean, the the last case is an example, right? The decision was to keep the elementary buildings in normal hybrid operation. And the middle and high school went into full remote operations. Had Dr. Sullivan decided to revert the entire district into full remote operations. Which would have been erring on the, you know, that would have been the decision made out of abundance of caution, that would have been erring on the side of total caution. Then, you know, three days, within three days after that decision was made and implemented. The school committee would come together and discuss it, and perhaps the school committee would feel that the elementary schools should not, it was not warranted. To have the elementary schools revert to full remote and that we wanted the elementary schools to. Return to hybrid operations, and in that case, we would be disagreeing with the superintendent. And I think the issue would be, we would take a vote, and if there was a majority vote that we. Asked for, that we requesting the superintendent to return to a hybrid operation at the elementary level, that. Uh, he would take that vote into consideration and implement that requested change. That I think is what the the pro- the process we're discussing here is is is. Contemplated to achieve, it's sort of a. I don't want to call it a checks and balances, it's just a, it's just sort of a. Including more perspectives in the decision. After the period of time where the decision has to be made out of an abundance of caution for for safety, but, you know, perhaps. When more perspective is taken into consideration. Some element of that decision could be changed, and, you know, so in your example. The superintendent makes a decision to close the buildings, well, maybe we would come back and say that we don't think that that was the right decision. And we would like him to reverse that decision in some way. That is the point of this, so you may feel, Ms. Mar, and and I I don't think that it's it's misplaced. You may feel that, uh, based on your experiences and knowledge of our superintendent's abilities. You would tend to trust his judgment in in knowing the process that he, you know, he goes through and making the decisions. And and maybe, maybe, maybe this is, maybe I'm just putting words in your mouth, I don't know, but. Um, and and that's a very valid position, and and I I think that I feel very confident in his abilities, but, you know, I I think that this is just a, I think this is, as as Dr. Sullivan explaining earlier. This is one of those situations where it's just an unprecedented. Uh, you know. Circumstance, and this is an operational decision that maybe could benefit from. Uh, additional perspectives after the emergency decision is made. Um, again, under those specific circumstances that I described. Uh, a moment ago, and and again, as as Mrs. Colary just said, she feels two weeks is more reasonable, that's great, that's why I was just, I was just sort of. Starting the conversation somewhere, um, so we could all have a discussion, Dr. Sullivan, you want to say?
Yeah, I mean, you can also, I mean, really, the important part for me is you being a voice in those major decisions, it's not to direct the operations. Necessarily, it's just to listen to what your voice is, which I would do. Um, in making sure that I made the right decision, and look, I just want everyone to know, like, this is just because these decisions are giant. Uh, when you're closing a school building for multiple weeks. And that's really, it's a very narrow window that I really think this, because I do think there's a a clear. Um, and it's it's a balance between the operational and, you know, what what you're doing, which is policy. Uh, and kind of the voice of the community, if they're different constructs. However, I I appreciate hearing your voice, so I I I may not agree with it, and I may decide to. Move in the same direction, but to listen to your voice in a forum. Um, for a giant decision like that, I think is 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 important, so that that's more important to me than being directed one way or the other. But of course, I think, um, listening to your voice in a in a format like this would be productive. If that makes sense, Chair McClellan.
Sure, I mean, again, that's the point of, you know, if if you feel like there there wouldn't be a sort of an, if we wouldn't, we wouldn't be suggesting an override. Uh, ability, then.
Recommendation?
Yes, so it would be a recommendation, fine, so yet yet another point of discussion here in the suggestion I just made. So that that's something else we can consider, so I I, you know, I don't I don't know if that clarified the situation for you at all, Mrs. Mar, but, you know.
Um, ye- yes, it did, thank you, and so I I would agree with, um, Mrs. Colary's two week. Timeframe, and I would also, you you know, we're talking about one very specific. Decision, you you know, about COVID nineteen and 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 closing a school or a building or 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 a district. I I think we've learned that we don't know what's coming at us, and I I think. The practice that, well, the example that we had for March is a good example, that when something significant. Out of the ordinary, never seen before, happens, we should all be prepared to convene immediately in an emergency to collaborate and discuss. Because I I wouldn't want to establish this protocol con- constricted to. Just closing a building because of, you know, a situation with with a community member with COVID nineteen, I I'd like. Everyone to be thinking about being prepared to handle. The unanticipated things, because I think they're just going to keep coming.
Okay, Mr. Kearney.
I'm in agree agreements. I think, uh, I think it two weeks would be a good. Um, or one week.
And, Mrs. Sanon, what are your thoughts on this?
I have to admit that I feel like this conversation has gone in a lot of different directions, so I'm not even really sure. What I'm agreeing with or not right now, but I was kind of looking at this agenda item, I was thinking like, oh, are we putting like. Numbers in place or like suggestions in place so that. Kind of like what was done at a state level, like, okay, like, if. Three, three or more people have been exposed, then we're going into this like school lockdown mode, like, I I guess that's kind of where my brain was. But like, what, I I don't, I got, I feel like Dr. Sullivan is consulting with the Department of Health and like making decisions to keep. Our our school population to maintain a level of under exposure, right, like. We have five cases. Out of seventeen hundred people because we are being careful. I don't know, I I don't know, I just feel like, like he needs to make those decisions if there's an emergency, we have an emergency meeting or something unexpected.
I'm fine with that, too, I I mean, I'm I'm just open for the discussion, I think it's a good one to have because these are really unprecedented times. You know, that's all, I.
Again, so it's just, you know, there was a lot of, there was, there was a lot of of. You know, uh. Controversy surrounding the last decision, I think it was because it was sort of the first time that happened. And people were concerned that, you know, they're not privy to the process, so they don't know what's happening, we all do. So we're confident in the decision, but some people don't, and they want to make sure that the community's voice is heard before an impactful decision like that is happening, so the question is really, you know. Do we just, and then Dr. Sullivan just said, Mrs. Clear, yes.
I think the 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 real issue is that this is not. Um, something that is necessarily possible to do before a decision is made, right? So we have to ask ourselves what the point is, and if the point is. Simply to ensure that the community feels like they have a voice. Then maybe what we do is we say, if there is more than one week between when the decision is made and the next school committee meeting. That we will convene a special meeting to ensure that we have time for public comment. And that's simply what it is, um, then we have to ask ourselves whether. That will be productive, I think. I want to say that the reason I feel so fortunate to have Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins, and this leadership team here in this district is because we're having. Like conversations like these, right? This is why I trust their judgment completely, right? So it almost, I I feel like this discussion almost provides as much reassurance. As I would need, even though I didn't really feel like I needed any reassurance before this. Um, and I guess I question now, having. Participated in the conversation thus far. Like, what's, what's really the objective here?
Yeah, I mean, look, I mean, I it, I just wanted to hear what thoughts were, I know Craig wanted to as well. Really, you know, look, I'm completely comfortable being responsible, I am responsible, that's my job, I'm the superintendent. I don't want to like make anyone think that that's not the case, that I I I'm very confident in the decisions I'm making. Um, because I'm using people to to you hear their voices. I just wanted to, you know, get this out there with the committee to see where your thoughts were on it, I I think I should be making operational decisions. I'm comfortable doing that going forward, I think it just would be nice to hear your voice, um, if it's a massive decision. To maybe be a recommending. Party with that, I I I don't even know if we need to set any limits, I think it might be a good idea, Chair McClellan, if. There is a major closure that, you know, we do look to have a meeting to to have a discussion about the decision. But I also have to think about, you know, if I make a decision and then we shift course in the middle of it, that could be potentially a problem. As well, so, uh, I don't know, I. I'll leave it to you, Chair McClellan.
I I feel that we're all here to discuss issues that the community finds important. And that's why we're talking about this, it seems like the members of the school committee are confident in Dr. Sullivan's abilities to make operational decisions. I don't blame them for that. Um, one of the, as I mentioned before, valuable aspects or facets of this proposed. Uh, procedure is that I felt that it would provide Dr. Sullivan with some support. There is also the argument that it could create a too many chefs in the kitchen scenario. Where Dr. Sullivan is hired. To make these decisions, we hired him because we think he's qualified, we hired him because we think he's a reasonable, logical person. And that we thought he was going to be a great superintendent. And so we need to let him do that job and fulfill his job responsibilities as he has been doing. And I I just saw the value in it from a support perspective, and I I did see a lot of. Folks in the community that were bothered by the decision and that. Perspective may have arisen out of the fact that. Um, there was either misinformation or a lack of information, and that's because not everyone can be privy to the deci- the decision, I mean, you know, Dr. Sullivan's going to be. Speaking with the, you know, uh, emergency, emergency management team, board of health, fire chief, police chief, you know, various individuals are making this decision. School committee chairperson. You know, and. Um, school committee chairperson, um, you know, and, um. And maybe people don't know that, and they thought it was, and they felt that it was sort of more of a, of a, just sort of like erring on the side of caution. I, I don't know, but. I bring, I bring this back to the, to the thought that I feel like there are members of the community. That would like to see some public discussion had about reverting to full remote operations. Um, in a, in a large scale in the district, um, after some sort of situation like this, um, you know, uh, potential super spreader event. Um, I value the input of the community member that, that raised that. I, 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 that's what I feel I'm here to do. I'm, I'm here to bring that to the table. And I think that we've been asked a question, and I think we've discussed it. But I think that, you know, we should basically make a decision tonight. Whether or not we involve ourselves in a specific emergency circumstance or whether we don't. And I'm getting that a lot of the school committees feel like they're comfortable with how it is. That's great, that's kind of the discussion we're just having. So people should vote against anything different than what we do right now. But I do feel like it's a valid concern. I wanted to address it, I wanted to discuss it, we did, and I, I made a proposal. Um, I, I guess, you know, people said two weeks, I, I'm, I'm willing to adjust that for the purposes of the vote. And if you feel that we don't need to have, uh, a, a meeting, a special meeting with the sole purpose of discussing. A full remote closure within three days of that, uh, three business days of that decision having been made by the superintendent. Then don't vote in favor of it. But, um, but I think it's important that we consider it, um, for, um, these individuals that this is an important issue to. So, um, you know, I don't know if anyone else has anything else to say, uh, uh, beside, you know, uh. Other than that, I, I really just want to sort of take a vote on what we want to do. Um, and, uh, I guess we need the particulars of that. And to me, you know, it sounds like there was like, you know, two weeks was the, you know, if, if, if a decision to revert to full remote operations for two or more weeks. Um, then after the emergency decision is made, within three business days, we have a special school committee meeting to discuss that decision. And whether or not everything was taken into consideration. And then a recommendation, not a, uh, not a sort of decree or order, for lack of a better phrase. The superintendent is then formally made, and the superintendent can take that into consideration and either adopt it or disregard it. Uh, as he sees fit, because that's what we've hired him to do. But, uh, so I, I guess, I guess, uh, I would just ask for a motion. Uh. To implement a procedure. That reviews the superintendent's emergency decision to revert to full road operations in a school building or the entire district. Uh, which impacts the district for a period of time of two or more weeks. And that, uh, the school committee convenes in order to review that decision within three business days of the emergency or three school days of the decision being made by the superintendent. So if you vote in favor of this motion, first of all, I have to ask for the motion. Um, but if you vote, if it was the motion, uh, is made and seconded, and we have a vote, if you vote in favor of it. Then we would be changing the process from what it is right now. And just changing the process in that Dr. Sullivan would still make the decision. But within three business days of that emergency decision, if it affected the district for two or more weeks. Then we would develop a recommendation after discussion, and we'd have a special meeting solely designed to talk about that. And then we would have a recommendation to superintendent whether or not we felt that the decision was the right one. So if you vote in favor of the motion, if there is a motion, then that is, uh, what we would do. If you vote against it, then there would be, you'd be voting for no, no change in circumstances here. So, uh, in the interest of considering, it means Dr. Sullivan, yes?
No, I, I think it's, I just, I just think the conversation is good because we're trying to do, get what's, we're trying to make big decisions in, in a correct way. Uh, I just want to say that, so I mean, I, I just appreciate the discussion.
So, um, so is there even a motion to that effect on the floor to consider at this time?
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Kearney, is there a second to that motion? Okay, seeing no second, there is no motion to consider, so there will be no vote taken on that issue.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Uh, I would like to revisit, this may have been deliberately ignored. Or it may be that it wasn't necessarily focused on appropriately. But I asked whether we could consider whether there's, um, more than one week between the decision being made. And the next school committee meeting. Being a factor, do you see what I mean? Because if there is a decision made and there is a school committee meeting the following Wednesday. So let's say it's made on Thursday, there's a school committee meeting the Wednesday of the following week. It doesn't make sense to have a meeting three days later, right? So can we consider, uh, you know, and sometimes there's two weeks. I mean, there's always two weeks, but sometimes there's more than two weeks between meetings. So is it worth considering putting some language into a motion that says if there is more than one week between the decision being made. And the next school committee meeting, the school committee will convene to discuss the closure?
Sure, if that would change people's perspectives on it, I'm happy to, to do that. We, we have that same motion, except we wouldn't meet or convene in a special meeting within three business days. Uh, if there was a school committee meeting, a regular school committee scheduled within two weeks. So in other words, if there was a regular school committee scheduled within two weeks of the emergency decision being made by the superintendent. Which in all circumstances, or in all likelihood, there, there would be. Uh, we would, uh, convene within three business days in a special session. With the sole purpose of considering whether or not we should revert to full remote operations in one building or the entire district. And whether or not we want to make a different recommendation to the superintendent. Is that more along lines of? What you'd want to consider?
I think it does make sense if there's more than one week between the decision being made and a school committee meeting.
And again, if you don't feel like we need to consider this, then, then we don't have to be second the motion. It's just, you know, if, if Mrs. Colari, this changes your perspective and Mr. Kearney's motion, you know, uh, if, if we want to make another motion in, including your language. And then there may be a second, then we can consider it, and maybe it passes, maybe it doesn't. So I will.
Mrs. Mar has, um.
Yes.
Um. I think we're making this very complicated, and I, I don't know if we really need to even have a vote. I think that we have past practice as protocol to, to convene a special meeting when necessary. To, um, support, discuss, collaborate on major emerging decisions. And, um, I, I think, I think the conversation that we've been having is enough to assure the community. That we've heard the community that wants to make sure that we have our input, um, into these decisions. And we're going to take it as it comes. I, I, I don't know if we want to get roped into procedure and protocol. And one week, two weeks, three days before a meeting, four days after a meeting, we have a snow day, how, how do you handle it? I think we just rely on past practice on how we've handled it. And, um, know that we're all on deck when a decision is made, that we might have a special meeting, and we get it posted.
Okay, well, guess what? The motion was made, it wasn't seconded, so we'll be moving on. Okay, there has been no change in the procedure here, okay? So we had the discussion, that's all I wanted to have. And, uh, I don't think people felt strongly enough about it where the motion even passed, which is the first time I've ever witnessed that happen. In, uh, the time that I've been a school committee member. So I think that says something, and we'll move on. So Dr. Sullivan, keep on trucking, thanks for your, thanks for your work.
Uh, thank, thank you, I think it's a very thoughtful committee. Um, it's apparent at all turns that, that every one of this committee is trying to do the right thing. And is really, um, approaching it with a collective voice. So I just want to say I really, really very much appreciate that. Um, we do not have anything else on the, um, superintendent's report, uh, so I'll turn it over to you, I know we next.
Calendar, calendar update.
Oh, yes, I am so sorry. Yes, the calendar update, uh, Dr. Scollins, would you like to, um, share the calendar? Can you do that, or would you like me to?
I would love to, I think I did, how did I do?
You did well, and we have a new format to our calendar, Chair McClellan. That I think is going to be pleasing to folks, as the last one was, um, not so.
It was getting tricky.
Yeah.
It was getting tricky. Um, so actually giving credit to Jennifer Saridis for finding this and, 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 uh, coming up with this from looking around at other schools, so, um, around us. And so I think this is a much easier format for us to look at, the, the calendar was getting very full. So, um, what we've done is really kept the calendar that you would see with the, um, the actual calendar box to the left. But to the right, we listed everything out in numerical order. So I think that that will be helpful for families to be able to look quickly and see what needs to be done. Um, the additional piece that was added, of course, is the Wednesdays. And that's where it really started to make the calendar look, um, a little bit crazy with the boxes, the way it was set up originally. So as you can see, in December, we added the in-person days, starting with the ninth. And it will go through, and every parent will know exactly what day. And what child will be looking at the calendar also, um, as to when they are the Wednesday cohort A or cohort B. So, um, we've done that all the way through, actually, we, I mean Jennifer. Um, did this and put this all together for us. Um, and her and I looked it over carefully a couple of times to make sure that we got it right. Um, so we are in, um, we didn't change the formatting of the actual calendar itself. So there's still highlighted pieces that you can see, so we didn't change that. But we just really switched it around. It's still only two pages, which is terrific, because we didn't want to get into a, a really long calendar. But, um, it takes us all the way to June and, um. Without a snow day, and that will be on the twenty-third, as Dr. Sullivan said earlier. And, um, and that, to make it even, and even Steven for everybody, uh, it's a remote learning day, um, for, for, it's on the last day of school. But it's all even, um, so that's, that's, uh, that's good.
So we need to take a vote on this, uh, Chair McClellan, for, I think it's the, we're definitely setting a, a record for the, uh, amount of calendars we voted on. But this would be, uh, require another vote.
All right, well, let's see if we can get a seconded motion here. Uh, is there a motion on the floor to, uh, approve and adopt the, uh, revised version of the calendar just presented by Dr. Scollins a moment ago?
I.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion made by, who was that?
Mrs. Colari.
Motion made by Mrs. Colari, is there a second?
Second, Lydia St. Orange.
By Mrs. St. Orange, here we go, all in favor of this motion, please indicate, so enroll call, Mrs. Colari.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Mar?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously passes, so please, uh, you know, adopt that revised calendar, thank you very much, thank you, Dr. Scollins.
You're welcome.
Does that conclude the superintendent's report, Dr. Sullivan?
Yes, it certainly does, Chair McClellan.
All right, thank you so much. The next, uh, agenda item is the, uh, special education report from our, uh, Director of Student Services, Barbara Sowanka.
Good evening, everybody. Um, Dr. Sullivan or Dr. Scollins, I'm wondering if you can share my bullseye, or if you want to turn it over to me to share it?
Sure, I will, if you haven't ready to go, um, actually, you have to, uh, Dr. Scollins, make, um, Barbara a host, co-host. You click on her. You're muted.
You're a co-host. Go to it, Barbara.
So what I am sharing with you right now, if you can see it, is, um, my bullseye target or my. Oh, wow, I'm sharing a couple of things with you.
Uh, we just see the, uh, bullseye.
Oh, you do, okay, very good. So what I'm sharing with you really is, um, my bullseye target that I worked on, um, with Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins regarding, um, my goals. And pairing with them and our strategic plan and the leadership team around the specific areas that I, as the Director of Student Services. Um, I'm going to address this year. Um, you can see there that, um, in the very center, the areas.
Scroll up a little bit there, uh.
Okay. I, um. I'm going to stop my share for a moment, because I was not seeing the same thing you were, which was odd. So here we go, okay.
Now see if you can scroll down.
Yes.
There you go, you got.
There, now you can see, oops, too far.
Do that all the time.
Let's see, hold on one second here. All right. There we go. So you can see there that the things that I'm going to be addressing deeply, um, particularly with, um. Within the strategic plan and the leadership team, the safety protocols, the learning walks, um, the strategic plan. Um, some of the areas that I'm going to talk to you about tonight that I want to share with you, which are my particular goals. Are around the communication, the special education programming, and the tiered supports in SEL. Um, obviously a big thing, um, for me around collaboration with the CPAC, with the community and with the staff. Working with the leadership team and leadership team development. And in, um, in and through our learning walks and on technology specifically in the area of assistive technology. So in terms of my goals, um, I just thought it might be really a nice time for you to hear from me about the things that I really have as a focus this year. And some of the ways that I'm going to move forward with them. Um, in terms of special education programming, to really continue to take that deep look at the needs of our students. At their ability to access and to progress, and the use of technology in that. Some of the things that I already have in place and planned for this involve, um, a program evaluation by Jim Schillinglaw. Um, he is a consultant with whom we have looked at our programming before and done some evaluations. Given that next year is a tiered focus monitoring on site for our district, it's a very good time to be doing this. I was just collaborating with him about it again as early as this week. And we have agreed that we are going to do this in the spring. And that his report will be ready by the end of the school year. And we will take a look at some of the areas that we have really been focusing on lately and areas that we may, may need to take a deeper focus on. In terms of, um, our co-teaching, in terms of, you know, our programming for students and what we see as rising needs. And also in terms of our, um, our learning centers and, uh, really our, um, our reading in our district. We also partnered with Seaside Consulting around our, um, co-teaching, and we're continuing that model. So those are just some examples of the special education programming goals and directions in which I'm going. Um, another, our, my second goal really is around, um, tiered supports. SEL, MTSS, and Dr. Scollins and I are really pairing on this. Working with the building principals, working with the child study teams, taking a look at our ability to meet the needs of all students through supports. And what we can do in terms of some horizontal and vertical alignment in that. And continue to expand on that. And, um, the third area for me is the area of communication. This is very important to me, it's important to the district, and I really want to uphold that transparency and communication. Um, you know, some of the areas obviously in which I do it are nights like tonight with you in front of the school committee in our community. Also through our bimonthly meetings with the CPAC. Um, collaboration with the, um, leadership team and with the building principals. Monthly regularly with my staff, at least monthly, with families regularly. But also leading my staff by example in some of that very open communication. So those are, um, the areas that I really wanted to look at and to share with you tonight. And to share my bullseye and my specific goals with you. And, um, I'm going to stop sharing now, unless you need it up there any longer. And see if you have any questions or comments for me this evening.
Say we've done a, um, we've done, we, we do a few things, and we have a district bullseye, and then we do the bullseye for everyone. Uh, and it really helps us form our specific goals within the district goals. And when we get a new strategic plan, it'll help us, um, you know, target things even more directly. Um, so yeah. So yeah, any questions for Barbara at all? We're very excited by the work she's doing and the and the culture she's creating here in Cohasset, which has been very positive since she's arrived and we're we're excited to see that continue to grow.
Yes, thank you, Barbara. I really value your participation in these meetings. I really value your part in the leadership team and I appreciate the voice that you bring. Thank you.
One thing I'd say that, you know, Barbara and I have discussed in if there are, her her role, as does Dr. Scollins and, you know, and even Sue, to an extent with her Director of Finance and Operations, they stem kind of a broad scope. So if there are specific items that we want to make sure that we have Barbara update on, whether it be, you know, some data or numbers or a specific area or department within her department, you know, just let us know, we'll make sure we have that as a real focus of an update moving forward. But this was a nice overview of her focus points, which is, you know, thank you for doing that, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. It was nice to see the the bullseye. I was very happy to see your second goal for the tiered supports. Past committee members have have had a particular affinity to for us to stay on target with our tiered supports and our child study teams. And to Dr. Sullivan's point, I would love to have maybe an update, maybe not at your next presentation, but maybe one after on where we are on those on those supports for our students who are, you know, in need. And I think it also dovetails nicely with one of Dr. Sullivan's goals about, you know, filling the learning gaps that we have during the pandemic. So I'm happy to see that that tie in there. So thank you.
Great, and I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar, Mr. Kearney. We're not out of pick order, sorry.
Yeah, yes, Barbara, I just want to say that you guys are also doing such a great job. And as we are as a district with communication, I think it's, we've really stepped up with the communications. And I can see that with the bi-weekly CPAC meetings. I think that's just another example of how we're going as a district and getting the message out there. And yeah, I just want to say that we're excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney, Mrs. St. Orange, do you have any comments?
Just to say thank you for your hard work. I think that your your job, like we're saying, with just all of our concerns with potential gaps in learning and different learning modules and and approaches and how to differentiate in all these ways is it's nice to have you at the helm of that. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I just, you know, I think, Mr. Ronger, your your job is always a very important one, but especially now. So that's why I value these updates and I value that they become a more a more frequent part of our our meetings. Because it's, especially in today's day and age, it's just a very impactful facet of our of our district. And there's, and and the anxieties that we all feel and stresses that we all feel and the challenges and hurdles that we all face are compounded for those individuals that have, you know, special needs or learning disabilities. And we all need to remain constantly cognizant of that. So thank you so much for all of your efforts and I know that we're very lucky to have you. I've been so impressed with everything that you've done and the presence that you've brought to the leadership team. It's really just a refreshing perspective. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on is the school committee comments and communication. The first item under that section of the agenda is the is the solar update from the Alternative Energy Committee. Mrs. St. Orange, do you want to lead this discussion?
Yes, thank you. I believe that we have Tanya Bodell and also Michelle Leary to be promoted to lead kind of a follow-up presentation. So for the past month or so, as as you all know, because Tanya presented a few weeks ago, the the RFP committee, including Susan and myself, have spent a lot of time together learning so much about the potential for solar in our town. And we have gone through our due diligence and and we had nine bids on this solar project. And we narrowed it down to four. We interviewed all of those companies, we narrowed it down to four and then went back and and did another round of interviews. So I feel that as a committee, we have become so informed in what the possibilities are and what the potential is for solar in our town. We also, you know, now better understand our limitations with our school roofs not expiring until after this year in 2023, 24 and 25. And so we were able as a committee led by Tanya to come up with a recommendation for the schools. And so I will now pass it off to you to share the findings of the committee.
Excellent. And do I have the ability to share my screen?
You do now.
Okay. Is effectively you've been paid to put these up, as you can think of it that way.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure as we start to think about our FY22 budget that we're not going to have any expenditures for this. Okay.
No upfront cost. And in fact, the reason why we don't have the town do it is because a lot of the incentives are tax breaks or tax credits. So it makes sense to have somebody who has tax appetite or tax bills to do the development, take advantage of those, pass those savings on to us, which is why there's no upfront cost to us. And in fact, there's savings. So a building resiliency that pays for itself.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. St. Orange, do you have any questions, Ms. Bodell?
Um, I don't really have questions, but may I share a comment? Okay. I just obviously have been a part of this process. And so this has been a part of my my daily life for the past month. But in the past week, I just started to look up kind of local news articles from towns in New England who have put in carports and canopies. I think, you know, in New England, we really value our bucolic villages and our quaint surroundings. And I was curious how people in places like Connecticut and in Wayland had responded to this. And so a theme that I saw, I I read throughout these articles that were overwhelmingly from like mariner equivalents and also high school newspapers were two things. One, school principals were overwhelmingly pleased with the efficiency and of of the install and how little impact it it seemed to have on their their goings on at school. And also overwhelmingly, students were responding to it positively for a couple of reasons. One, their cars were super dry in the rain and they never had to scrape snow. And also, they were really proud that there was this symbol of clean energy put in place at the school. So I just thought it was interesting kind of looking at communities that were kind of similar to ours throughout New England with what the response was for people who had already done this. Because we value what our community looks like. But I think it can be seen as a symbol of of our taking a stance as is really valuing clean energy and trying to be like alternative energy forward as a community and as a school.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange, for that input. And thank you so much for for your help and your participation in the process. And actually, your insights, your comments just now were pretty helpful and pretty interesting. Thank you for looking and doing that research and that legwork. It's pretty interesting. My my question, Mrs. Bodell, is is is, I I'm concerned with, I personally want to push for a new middle high school. And I want to do that, you know, in the not too distant future. I'm concerned that there is absolutely no way to know how we're going to use that spot if that ends up being the the site of the future school, which I'd imagine it probably would be. But I don't know, I have no idea. There's a whole process ahead of us that we haven't even started yet to to explore this. But I I guess, are these things, are they, this may be a foolish question. I mean, obviously, they're permanent structures, but is it something that, are they something that can be moved if necessary temporarily? And then, you know, I I don't know. I mean, I I I'm sure they're hardwired. I I don't know.
Right. So we we asked about this question with respect to the roofs, which don't have as much metal and supports. And in the case of even with the roofs, it was, we were told, it's just not economically feasible. If we were to do that, we'd have to have a clause in our contract that says we're responsible for the costs to remove them. And then in addition, we'd be responsible for the lost revenue during the period of time that they're not in place generating solar, because that's what the banks are going to require to give the financing. So that was the rooftops. And I think it's even more so with respect to the carports, which have this structure. So by moving forward on the high school, middle school, you would be taking up that space for the next 20 years. Could there be more that could be done at Osgood and Deer Hill? Instead of putting it at the high school, middle school, the answer is potentially, it just depends what land you'd want to give at those schools. But I I think it would not be economically feasible to expect to be able to take them down or dismantle them, have them at a commission for three months and then put them up someplace else.
I figured as much. So moving on to the second part of what you were saying, is there, is there any way to make, well, I guess this is twofold. One is, you mentioned that if it's not over one megawatt, that it's 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 not really a sensible project to move forward with.
No, 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 I didn't say that at all. I just said that if it's not over one megawatt, we don't get as much savings. I think the savings go down by about 25% if.
Okay, now, let me ask you this. So so understanding that then, is it something that we could, is this sort of a one and done? And and or or could we add to it, you know, a few years after we, so say we install, so we say we we vote to approve it for Deer Hill and Osgood as proposed, not middle high school, then a few years down the road, should we build a new middle high school? We know where they're going to be situated. Obviously, there'll still be a parking lot somewhere. Maybe it will, you know, may or may not be in the same spot. Could we then add to it and then and then achieve that 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 better savings? Or would somehow two different projects, I don't know, some somehow negate the savings there?
Yeah, unfortunately, the the in the future, you always could add on. Like I said, for the roofs, once they're replaced, we might want to revisit this in another three to five years. Why we're trying to move quickly on this now is the federal incentives that are in place today, ratchet down after the end of the year from 26% of the capital cost to 22% of the capital cost. And similarly, the state has incentives that are in place today that just got approved this year. Those get filled up very quickly. There's another piece that we're trying to go after as well on the incentives, but there's only like 1.7 megawatts left. It's very hard to be national grid service territory because most of the solar that gets built is out in the West where there's open land and it's cheap. And so we get left out. The town that doesn't pick up this opportunity, they're going to be paying for everybody else's, frankly. I mean, that's just unfortunately, the way that this type of socialized incentive works. So as a result, you could defer, but you're not going to be able to get the savings for the one megawatt economies of scale. And we will not be guaranteed that we're going to have incentives at a level or price reductions at a level that would be better than we have today.
And the the photograph that you showed us, is that the exact model that would be installed? I mean, there are different, other different, I don't know, for lack of a better phrase, aesthetic options. You know, to be candid, I find them quite ugly. So and I know that they're, it's they're important and, and, you know, and I know not everyone's on board with windmills and things like that. But, you know, I understand that there has to be some aesthetic compromise made. I'm just wondering if they're different options, maybe, you know, than the ones you showed us in the photograph.
Well, so the ones in the photograph, that one of in front of Deer Hill, is something that was grabbed from the internet. I think this would be a point where if Judith from Amarausco, Judith is a former commissioner for the Department of Energy Resources in Massachusetts. If Judith can be promoted to a panelist, she might have an answer on what the options are with respect to the different styles of carports.
Okay. Could Dr. Sullivan or Dr. Scollins, could you promote Ms. Judson to panelist, please?
Just it's, Craig.
Great, thank you.
Um, can I can I chime in for just two seconds?
Sure.
I think something that I believe was a part of the Amarausco proposal, Tanya, was the educational element as well, right? So I don't know that that was in the proposal and I feel like so many things have been said tonight already. But I just think it's interesting to bring that up to, just to have that as an added part of the package.
Yeah, Amarausco's proposal, I was going to include that and I did not. Amarausco's proposal showed their little solar wagon. They have a little wagon that they bring into the schools and it has a solar panel on it. The kids get to touch it and learn about it. And they do a lot of educational, this is part of why they do so many of the schools, is they've incorporated into their proposal an educational component that's for all grade levels. And so that's a very nice aspect of what they offer as well. So Judith, is Judith on?
Yes.
Hi, Judith.
Hi, Tanya.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what the process would be with respect to choosing the type of carport and what whether you use one type or if there are other options? And there also might be something at the planning board. I I don't know. I leave that to you. This is definitely up to you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you so much for considering this. We're very excited to work with Cohasset in delivering these savings. As Tanya said, it's something we've done for other communities in Massachusetts, carports at schools. And we really hope to have this opportunity here because there's both savings. And we have found that that those towns have have really liked having them. In terms of aesthetics, we will always work very closely with the town. We will work with the school committee as well as the planning boards and any other interested parties to have the best looking carports that we can have. We of course need to design them in a way that they, you know, that they do have solar panels on them and and meet, you know, we'll use the most efficient panels available at the time so they can, you know, minimize, you know, any any site impacts. But but that said, we we utilize the most, you know, we use a utilize a design that is extremely safe, that is, has height clearance, and we will work to to minimize or to have the best aesthetics. There are some options, there are various suppliers, but but they will look like solar canopies to to a certain extent. So, you know, we can show some of those renderings of what we've done at other schools so you can have a chance to see those as we go through the process. And and then just lastly, just to add on to what to what was said about the educational component. So we included in our proposal and it's, there's no cost, it's part of those savings that we have educational tools that we've put together. We've worked with with, you know, over 50 communities in Massachusetts. Not all of those have had solar, but efficiency, where we've put these together, where we have curriculum materials for clean energy. We will include at a location of your choice, a kiosk or public display of the operations that students can interact with and members of the public. We also have that solar wagon, which is basically a solar panel that can wheel into the classroom. So so it can be seen and and we are happy to always be available and members of our team available to to discuss and present that as well as, you know, at meetings or at the school. So we see this as part of the service that we provide in, you know, in putting in these solar canopies.
Thank you. Thank you all. Anyone else have any other questions or comments before we, before I ask for motion? Okay, I'm I'm just, I'm concerned about the, I'm concerned about the middle high school issue and not knowing what the specific aesthetic options would be prior to to voting, but.
I agree with you, Craig. I just want to say that I also agree with you. I I I don't even know what the. I don't even know what they're going to look like. This is just rendering, you know, I take the time to look at a school, maybe take a ride, where would you say these are in Wayland, Mass?
Yeah, Wayland has a project that was installed by Ameresco. Other schools have them, just not with the same company.
I understand what you're saying, Craig, because if we build a new building, you know, now we, I don't know if there's some kind of room of negotiating the fact that we would now have roofs that are available to extend the solar program. And that might be a bargaining chip to later terms, you know. But this is a commitment to use our parkamats for 20 years, if that's what we're looking at.
It's just tough, because it's a really awesome, I mean, I want to incorporate solar in our district, but it's just a really tough, it's really tough timing for us right now in terms of getting over this one megawatt threshold. I mean, it doesn't seem like that's really possible without either utilizing the roofs or additional space at the elementary schools. If we're going to try and avoid having, and look, the new schools issue is a big if. I mean, we haven't started the conversation yet, but you know, nevertheless, you kind of, you kind of really limit yourself right off the bat there by putting something up that's going to have to stay there for over 20 years. In terms of design and layout, if we do decide to move forward with some sort of, you know, revised middle high school or new middle high school. So I don't know, it's just tough timing. It's something that I'd love to see, but I don't want to make a sort of rash decision on it. And I understand the incentives are declining as time goes on. You know, and just previous years, they were higher. I mean, they're rapidly declining, the incentives, the tax incentives to do this. So I don't know, so I guess if anyone else has any comments, now's the time to make them, otherwise I'm going to seek a motion.
Yeah, I have a comment. I think that it's important to remember that this isn't an all or nothing choice that we're making. You know, the one megawatt is the ideal, right? Like that's the offer that's coming in, they're saying that's everything that Tanya wants to get, that the committee wants to get. That's the ideal. And then like now we're negotiating, right? Like so because of the potential for a new high school, which is an amazing potential. Perhaps that doesn't make the most sense. There would still be savings if there were canopies installed at the other schools. Like it doesn't stop being a saving opportunity and a clean energy opportunity, like it just changes the offer.
Okay, so Ms. Bodell, what kind of approval do you need at this point? I mean, you know, I see the ask on your first slide. I'm wondering, I mean, it says to install the proposed solar carport. So I mean, if we were to amend that and just vote on, you know, elementary schools, you know, and then, you know, we make that vote and say that vote passes, we're then locked into doing that, we have to do it. It's just a matter of then we can talk about design and things like that.
Right, so that's a good question. So there's a, again, we'd like to get a contract in place. So Ameresco can make purchases at the level they need to be able to get the incentives on the federal side. But, you know, there are certain things, like for example, the battery doesn't matter. If you want to, we're at a negotiation stage right now, right? So that negotiates how much and what style, really. So I think what we're looking for is an approval to move forward with negotiation. Is that only the schools, I'd recommend people from the Alternative Energy Committee be there to assist you. You know, from the Alternative Energy Committee's point of view, I think this is sort of now, other than an advisory role outside of our hand. This is a recommendation, if you would like to put some constraints on it, but approve moving forward with negotiations, knowing we'd like to get it closed out before the end of the year. You can put whatever caveats you'd like on it. And most certainly, I would expect people from the town, Susan Owens has been incredible. Lydia's been incredible. Ellen, when she's been attending our Alternative Energy Committee, they've been incredible. But this is now at the negotiation stage, and I would expect that the schools, the school administration would be involved in that negotiation. Again, I don't know whether it's the town that ultimately signs a contract or the school committee. We're just looking for an authorization to proceed with negotiating the contract, if you want to put some constraints on what that looks like. That's fine, but I think the reality is it's going to be your people doing the negotiation.
And this vote would allow us to award a letter of intent, right? And then it still has to go in front of the planning board, like so all of the aesthetic pieces discussed then, right? I'm just trying to kind of get out what I've learned or picked up over the past month of discussion. Michelle's on here too. Does she, I mean, can she chime in about those next steps in the process, Tanya? Is that?
Yeah, I'd say either Michelle or Judith, you know, who has been involved with these before.
So the next steps as far as the procurement process is we would issue, with your approval this evening with a vote, we would issue a letter of intent, we would negotiate the contract and move to a contract with the vendor who is Ameresco. Of course, we would like to do that before the end of the year, but hearing what everyone's saying, it seems like there's going to be a lot of negotiations involved based on where the canopies are going to be located, what they're going to look like. So we will have to work closely and rapidly to figure out, you know, what's the best fit for the schools.
Let me jump in. I can just add that, well, two things. One, I can show some pictures of our, you know, an existing project quickly, if that's of interest. I can share my screen, I'd bring those up. But the second thing I would say is, you know, as Tanya and Michelle mentioned, there are some tax incentives that go down at the start of next year. And also by having an award, we can lock in the state incentives, and those are declining as well. That said, it is very typical, in fact, always happens with all of our projects, that that is just the starting point. And then during the process of negotiating the aesthetics and the look and the specific quantity, that can all be negotiated. It's simply an award that can move things forward. And all those details, we continue to work very closely with the town so that the final project is exactly what you're looking for. So I just, I just wanted to let you know, this is just the start. And we would be negotiating during the course of this process to finalize all those details.
So Judith, what do you need, when you say an award, to be able to get in line for the state incentives? To be able to move forward with the investment that needs to be done to get the ITC?
Yeah, we would need something, ideally a contract, at minimum, some sort of letter of intent that says that Ameresco has been awarded to work with Cohasset on these projects so that we can file the SOQ. And that's a statement of qualification. So so that can be something that, you know, if you're willing to approve moving to that next step, it does not preclude then working and finalizing details in terms of exactly what is built.
So we say one or more of the schools, that's detailed enough? Or do we have to identify the schools?
Ideally, you identify the locations. You can always remove locations. But if a location isn't identified, you can't get your statement of qualification to get the incentive rate. So it's better to identify more than less. Because otherwise, they won't allow you to, for any location that isn't identified, you can't get a statement of qualification there. But you can always remove that location. There's nothing that stops you taking a project out, but you want to be able to put the project in.
And if we gave a letter of intent or approval for a letter of intent at this point for the specific sites of the schools, and then putting caveats like subject you were contingent on, does that give you enough?
Can give it non-binding, I think. Yeah, we'd have to look at the specific, the specific language about that. You'd want there to be enough there that it's clearly an award, but you also, it's non-binding. That said, you know, Ameresco is, you know, based on this, is going to move forward with ensuring that that the town can benefit from the investment tax credit. That's a risk that requires a 5% investment in order to safe harbor that. So we want, we will do that. So of course, the more you can do now, the better. But that said, we recognize this, we've worked with many, many communities, we have a commitment to working with you. And we'll make sure that, you know, that we do this in the steps that you're comfortable with.
Okay, any further comments or questions from the school committee? Okay, so at this point, it looks like the AEC is looking for us to vote on, to vote on a motion to approve the pursuit of negotiations to finalize a contract with Ameresco to install the proposed solar carports at the schools. And, you know, the ask included the middle high school. So I feel that if that's the ask, then that is the vote that we can first consider, the motion we can first consider.
Craig, can I interrupt? Just because I think that you and Paul are both looking for more visuals. And Judith was given permission to share her screen and she has examples. Is that something that we want to look at before we go ahead and vote?
That'd be great. Sure.
Thank you. Sorry to slow you down. I just want to make sure we're, you know, considering what's being offered.
Judith, I think you're on mute. I don't know if you're saying anything.
Okay, yes, I put it on mute. So this, you can see the, probably the most, so this is some of the schools that we've worked with. We've done projects at 86 sites for municipalities, some of that was different types of solar. But this is the Wayland project. Let me try to minimize my screen, maybe maximize this. This was the middle school in Wayland. You can see that there's four canopies here, school buses are able to move around. This is the, what it looks like on the ground, a picture of that. This box right here are the controls that link into the backup generator. There's an emergency shelter at the middle school, and so they actually have controls here where the solar can be utilized when the power goes out. That's an option we put in. You can see it's very minimal in terms of installation, and this is it visually, both on the ground and from above. And let's see, and then we are in process right now of constructing carports for Lexington. So this is more renderings, but they asked for the same thing. They said, can you bring us some renderings of what this will look like specifically at their school? We're doing this at seven schools, and this is an opportunity to see that the school buses are underneath, driving underneath and that there's lighting here. And then, let me see if I have, I don't want to take up more time, but those, you know, there's a few other. This, oh, and then this slide here, this is the solar wagon for the schools that we were talking about. So if you want me to bring up others, why don't I stop there and stop sharing? And then I can look for other pictures if you have more interest. But I know it's getting late.
Okay, well, I mean, that was very helpful to see. Thank you for showing us those. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, like, Wayland, you know, to be honest, like the Lexington looked, just aesthetically looked a lot better than, say, Wayland, you know, like, I feel like Wayland will look like, more like a gas station, you know, and I think where Lexington looked a little bit more attractive, maybe it was the lighting or whatever. But are we going to have any say in what exactly what the, what it's going to look like? Because it's really important, I mean, it's, you know, to Ashley's point, I mean, especially in the middle high school, there are going to be people that are going to see, you know, that's going to be a big part of our community. And, you know, I just, I'm just, I just really want to make sure that we're, you know, we get the latest and greatest. And my question would be like, when was Wayland put in? As opposed to, it looks like Lexington isn't done yet. Is that, is that?
Right, correct. Lexington is moving forward now with construction. And as you said, it's benefiting from the fact that the solar technology is evolving and the aesthetics are improving where Wayland was about three years ago. So you can really see that difference, and we would use the best available product at the time and take advantage of the fact that the aesthetics are improving.
Right, now, would you come back to us with those, or how does that work from there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We would definitely be showing you that to the school committee, to the planning board. We, you know, we work very closely throughout the process.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I think one thing, I plan to abstain from this vote, because I feel like it doesn't make sense for me to vote on it. It's just across the street for me. But I think one other thing to consider is that drop off and pickup have always been a logistical challenge at the elementary school campus. And I think it seems like this would limit our ability to do anything about that for 20 years if we did decide that we wanted to somehow alter the logistics of traffic there. Just one more layer of complexity that I just wanted to voice my concern about.
But we could also use it to our advantage too, that kids aren't standing in the rain as well. Right? I mean, it's.
Well, but they're not going to be standing in a parking lot in parking spaces. I'm not, I don't, I don't think that there's any immediate plan to address the fact that the traffic patterns are problematic. I just, this would ensure that there is no plan to address the traffic pattern.
Good point.
Also, like, considering space and wetlands and stuff around Osgood and Deer Hill, like, I guess I'm just curious, like, where you would even alter that?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think the the planning when it was created, maybe was a logistical challenge, but I just wanted to voice that.
I feel like I'd be more comfortable voting for this if it wasn't, if we didn't have to vote for such a specific, like, you know, plan. Like if it was, if we're basically voting to like proceed with negotiations and like in those negotiations, we're presented with all kinds of options and we're free to reject or accept them. That would, I'd be more comfortable with that, but I understand that you need a more concrete vote in that you need to, because certain purchases of certain materials need to be made with the intention of fulfilling a particular project.
Do we though? Do we need a vote that's that specific?
It seems like it.
I don't think we do. I think we need to redefine that.
The vote for tonight that we would like is to proceed with negotiations.
The vote for tonight that we would like is to proceed with negotiations. And then to the extent we could get on, and you've been awesome at getting us on your agenda. And to the extent that we would be able to get on the agenda, Amoresco has been incredibly responsive. Turns things around very quickly. Again, it would, I think this vote is to proceed with negotiations. You create your negotiating team and whatever the directions are that you give that negotiating team. They sit down with Amoresco and they hash it out. So if it is, we want you to come back to us with the style and, you know, other, again, we've come to recommending this because these are the highest savings, it provides the most benefits in a lot of different ways. And of all the bids we've gotten, this is the best we can offer you right now. So that's where we are. I think if you'd like to move forward with negotiations, our only request would be be cognizant of the timeframe. Maybe put us on the next school committee meeting sooner rather than later or in two weeks. I don't know when the next one is. And so we can sort of lock and load and move forward if you agree, once that is finalized.
Well, that's the other thing, right? I mean, the, the, the contemplated timeline is that we, we approve negotiations and then finalize a contract inside of 2020, correct?
That would be the goal.
I mean, that's a pretty ambitious goal, given the fact that the holidays are here. So I don't even know how possible that is. I don't even see that as being a realistic expectation. You know, tax incentives or not, it's just, I just don't see how that's possible because to me, there's just so many questions here. Like I, I want to support it because it's important. It's an important project. It provides a lot of benefits, but I, I don't want to just vote for it because like, yeah, there's some incentives right now to be had. And, you know, it's a seemingly great thing, but like, I, I don't know that the timing is great for the district right now. And, you know, the ideal thing would have been the roofs, but we can't do that because, you know, so it's like, you know, having these things in the, in the parking lots is, you know, I'm concerned because they completely obscure, obscure the buildings. The, the, the parking lots for the elementary schools are right in front of the buildings, as you know. And these things are large. And so you're completely obscuring a building. So what you're, all you're looking at when you're looking at the elementary campus is not the building. You're looking at these carport things. And so it goes, you know, it starts looking like the, you know, economy lot at Logan Airport. And it's like, I don't know, you know, it's like, I'd love to have the tech. I, I'd love to have the, the green tech. I'd love to do it. I'd love to get the benefits, but I'd rather see them on the roofs or something where that, where they're not so prominent. And that's just not, then that's why your recommendation was the carports, because it doesn't make any sense to have the roofs. And that's the problem. And, and then the other thing is that we vote to pursue and, you know, finalize contract negotiations. Great, but I don't see that happening in, in, you know, you know, less than, less than 30 days minus holidays. It's just too, it's too ambitious a goal.
Yeah. And also I think it takes off the incentive for us to get new roofs. Let's, let's face it, we want new roofs. And, you know, this might give us an incentive to the town to say, hey, if we put new roofs on, we're going to get solar power. And, and, you know, that's, that takes away our negotiations of, we need new roofs. I've been saying it for years. And, and you guys have just come in and, and just just agreed with us that they need new roofs because we can't put solar panels on them. They're not sustainable to do. Is that correct?
No. So the reason, against, that we haven't done an engineering study. The problem is we know for sure that the roofs will need to be replaced in the next 20 years.
Right.
Contract. That's just the age of the roofs. It's not any commentary on whether or not they can hold solar panels. And so as a result, every single bidder said, if you want to do this, you can, but you have to pay for the cost of the removal. The months that we're not getting the money for the production of the solar and then putting them back on.
Right.
Just becomes prohibitive, given the margins that we have.
Right. So if we were to decide to do new roofs, then that would be an incentive for us to move forward on that. Because we could, at that point, be able to put in solar.
It would, and this is where the timing is unfortunate because
Then again, we have to
40 to 50% savings from the, from the state.
Right. But if we have, if we have these carports that, again, we brought up parking issues and we do have them in a middle school. And, and we don't, we don't know if, if, if that's, that's the case. And then we got to pay you, or I'm not, not you, but pay the company to, to, to take them down. And, you know, we got to pay for lost revenue and, you know, that might be a nightmare. To Craig's point, I don't know if I feel comfortable making decisions for 20 years on not knowing exactly what they're going to look for. However, tonight's meeting, if I'm correct, is to just go forward to see if we're going to negotiate. There's no, there's no commitment of anything.
That, that, I mean, look, we recognize there's a lot of outstanding questions that we need to move forward on the negotiation with. We can't move forward with negotiation. If, if the answer is, there's no way we're going to even entertain carports, right? We've come to you with what the bidders have said. We've looked at the options, unfortunately, the roofs right now, because the age is not an option. So the best thing we can offer you at the schools for the savings is the carports. I mean, this is, we're the Alternative Energy Committee. This is our role to bring it to you. Your role is to decide. We can't move forward with negotiations at this point without your approval. We can't even begin negotiating. So we have, as a committee, looked at all the bids. And we're coming to you with the best option available to the schools. If the answer is, it's just a non-starter, it's not going to happen, then we don't negotiate. If the answer is, it's very possible under certain conditions, start negotiating. We can start negotiating if you give us authorization to do that. And again, it's not, we, the Alternative Energy Committee, aren't the negotiators. We'd like to help advise on that. But there's a negotiation process for the town and for the schools that I'm sure you're more aware of than we are. And so that would be the process that would proceed.
Okay. I think that we've discussed the, the issue fairly thoroughly. I think everyone understands what we're voting on here. I'm looking for a motion to pursue negotiations with Amoresco for solar panel installation on district property. Is there a motion to that effect on the floor?
So moved. I think it's worth exploring a negotiation.
Okay. So there's a motion been made by Mrs. St. Ange. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar?
Yes.
Seconded by Mrs. Mar. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Mrs. Colery?
Stane.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
What did you say?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Nay. Craig McLuhan. That motion passes by a majority vote. So, Mrs. Bodell, you are free to pursue negotiations with Amoresco.
Excellent. We appreciate how you've been able to put us on the agenda and your time in considering this. Thank you very much. And we'll be back with some additional discussions. So I guess the next question is with respect to the school committee or the schools, who, is that Susan who's going to work with us? Who is? Do you want a representative from the schools who works negotiations?
Yes, I, I would certainly like a representative from the schools. I guess, when you, when, when are these going to commence? Maybe, maybe we'll, I don't think we have to decide who's going to be representative tonight. Probably decide that amongst ourselves and then keep in touch. You can, you know, email either Lydia or myself when you're dealing extensively with Lydia. And, and you can continue to do that. And obviously we'll, we'll keep her apprised of, it may very well be, be Mrs. St. Ange. I, I don't know. But we'll, we'll decide and then, and then obviously there'll be representation. And we're very appreciative of all your efforts and all the time and energy that's gone into this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item is goals. There is no report for goals. We still have to schedule that meeting, which we've been doing privately offline. Next agenda item after that is the school facilities committee. There's really nothing to report there. We're still looking for applications. And I've, I've put in my application for the committee, just so I can start to populate the committee so we can get it going. And I know, hopefully I get on. The next agenda is the reports from subcommittees and liaison positions. Are there any reports, Mrs. Colery?
No reports.
Miss, Mr. Kearney, any reports? Kearney, did you say there's a report? No?
No.
Mrs. Mar, any reports?
Um, yeah, just quickly, there, the CPC Cohasset Preservation Committee is having an open meeting Monday evening to start the conversation about applications for funding. And so I was with the committee's permission, planning on going to discuss the turf and track replacement that needs to happen because we could receive some funding from CPC. And in meeting with the town on capital budgets, they would like us to pursue that. So I'm happy to go on Monday evening, if that's all right with everybody.
Great.
Okay. And then just quickly, I don't know if anyone's seen it, and I'll try to get the link and send the video out. Kate Bosworth, who was a 2001 alumni of Cohasset High School, has done a, a great video. It's 32 minutes long of life as a Cohasset High School teenager and student. And she talked about ironically, what the old school looked like and what it looks like now. And it's really kind of an interesting take on someone who has, you know, propelled herself out of, you know, small town America into a national limelight and, and how she reflects back on her high school years. And I think all of us can, I don't know, Dr. Sullivan, if you've seen it yet. No, it's great.
I'd love to see it. I'd really enjoy that. Yeah.
Yeah, Adam Sasso's in it. Ron Ford's in it. They talk about Sweeney. I mean, it's just, it's really, it's really touching and really kind of a, kind of an interesting retrospective. And then Ashley, I have finished my policy review of those two sections you gave me. So I'll just update the spreadsheet. And that's what you need?
Thank you.
Okay. And I also marked up my hard copy with the mask language where there was, was a difference. So I'll just give it to you.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mrs. St. Ange?
I, I do not have any updates.
Thank you. No updates from me either. Next item on the agenda is approval minutes. We have no minutes to approve in this meeting. Next item on the agenda is topics not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours of the meeting. I don't have any. Does anyone have any topics that weren't reasonably anticipated to discuss today? Okay, we've already done executive session. So the last thing is to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Colery, seconded?
Second.
Kearney, all in favor, indicate so on roll call vote. Mrs. Colery?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Hi, Craig McLuhan. Meetings adjourned. Thank you all. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Night. Thank you, guys.